Hi Paul, we just admitted everyone and are setting up the appropriate permissions for the council members. So we'll have you all on camera in a moment.
Thank you.
Good evening, Paul, Mary Ann and Doug.
Good morning or good afternoon, evening.
I hope, I hope we don't run into morning. It's not a good sign. I'll say that.
Good evening, Steve, Mary Ann, Bruce and Doug.
You know, I feel like this is the Waltons.
Yes. Well, we'll see if John Boyce shows up. It is.
It is six thirty. So the February twenty seven, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. This meeting is being held by teleconference on account of the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. The city council appreciates everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch the meeting by visiting malibu city.org virtual meeting on their internet browser. At that webpage, members of the public can click on a tab to watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on particular items by following the instructions on the screen. During the meeting, the city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called. You must be present in the Zoom meeting room in order to speak the meeting. Otherwise, you can watch the meeting on one of the other forms of media on which the meeting is live streamed. Council members and members of the city staff are encouraged to use the Zoom raise hand function if they have comments to make during the meeting. I will call on meeting participants in turn. That way we will have a clear discussion for the record and for the public. May we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Grisanti.
Here.
Councilmember Riggins.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Protim Uring.
Here.
Mayor Silverstein.
I'm here as well.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we get a volunteer to lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Mary Ann, thank you.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mary Ann. May we please have a report on the posting of the agenda from the city clerk?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on February seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much. And may we please have an approval of the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
A second.
Great. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor.
Mary Ann, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. So I did review the minutes from that meeting, but there was a closed session.
We're just approving the agenda, not the.
I always get them mixed up. I'm so sorry.
No problem.
Mayor Protim Uring.
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti.
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins.
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart.
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so the first item is ceremonial presentations FEMA floodplain map update. And we're supposed to have a public works director presentation.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and councilmember. Update on our FEMA floodplain map that has been revised by FEMA just recently. So next slide. So first, let me give a little background on FEMA and flood insurance. FEMA has a subsidized flood insurance program that provides low rates insurance to to those members of the public. So long as the city confirms or follows FEMA regulations in in building and developing in a FEMA flood zone. The FEMA flood maps are used to determine what the rates for the insurance for a different property, property owners and those maps are updated every five years. This last one took a little longer because they were doing a longer part of the coast, the western United States, matter of fact. Next slide. So as I mentioned, back in December of two thousand and eleven, FEMA started the process of revising the flood maps. Along the western United States from Oregon all the way down to San Diego. FEMA has used advanced data out from the buoys out in the ocean, a lot of new kind of satellite image imagery to conduct their analysis and revise the flood maps. In two thousand and seventeen, FEMA did submit or conclude a draft of the revised flood maps and provide a copy to the city for us to review. In April of two thousand and twenty-one, FEMA concluded all of their findings and adopted their new flood maps. Next slide. Shortly after FEMA submitted their their draft changes to the maps, the city sent an appeal to FEMA claiming that that FEMA did not adequately provide the proper analysis on some of the some of the areas within Malibu. The city hired a consultant to do all this work and came to a recommendation that fourteen different sections within Malibu could could go for additional analysis and and lowering of base flood elevations within these areas. And this last February, actually the last couple of weeks, FEMA has approved our new base flood elevation and our new map revisions. And those changes resulted in a lower base flood elevations of about one to seven feet. Next slide. Here's a table of the different areas of of where we we went through and analyzed the different areas, the old base flood elevation, you can see the one column and the new base flood elevation and the change. You can see on here changes from about one foot all the way to seven feet. Next, next, next set of slides, I'm going to go over a few of these areas. I'm not going to go over all fourteen. But here's a few examples. This one's on Broad Beach Road, right just west of Llanida. The old, the old BFE, the old base flood elevation was thirty-one. The new one is twenty-five, which is about a six feet difference. Next slide. This location is in Malibu Cove Colony. The revised base flood elevation was was twenty-three. The new one now, it will be twenty-one. Next slide. The next one here I'm showing on Malibu Road, this was a quite a big difference from from what was done earlier. It was, oh, base population was thirty-one. Our new calculations has it at twenty-four. Next slide. And this one is Malibu Colony Road, the old old, old base foot elevation nineteen, new one is eighteen is it drops one foot in Malibu Colony. Next slide. And this last one here I want to show you is on on PCH, Chase the Big Rock. The old base flood elevation was twenty-one, the new one is nineteen, difference of two feet. Next slide. So all those slides and the tables are located on our website. I put together all the maps, all of those tables out so the public can actually see them. We are in the process of finalizing flyers going out to to all the property owners where they can see the changes that are going to be within their base foundation elevation within their area. Next step is FEMA will will issue a public notice in the newspaper that will that will demonstrate the changes to the base flood elevations and these flood zones. And within a hundred and twenty days after those public notices, the new changes will be affected. Now, so what does this all mean or who will be impacted? Well, the the changes to these base flood elevations will definitely have an impact on those property owners who are seeking subsidized flood insurance for FEMA. The people who already have insurance may not see a change in in their insurance, but they can contact their their, their, their insurance broker to see if those changes will be lower. So this was a lengthy process to get to this point. Like I mentioned too, this this started in two thousand and eleven. And now several years later, we're finally getting to a point where we have updated and accurate FEMA maps along our coastline. And that concludes my presentation and I'm available for questions.
Rob, if you explained that I might have missed it, what does the change in elevations do vis a vis the different residents' insurance?
Okay, so for insurance, the people that have insurance most likely will not have see a big difference or a difference at all. The people who are seeking new insurance will basically, their insurance rate will be based on on the new FEMA maps.
So the lower, the lower the number, the more expensive in in some way of the insurance? Is that the correlation?
Well, the lower the base level elevation means that the property will would be have to be lower to meet the base level, to meet those FEMA regulations and thus be able to be to get insurance. If they're in a situation where their building is lower than the base level elevation, then their their insurance will go up substantially.
So maybe I missed, are the lower numbers a net positive for residents or a net negative or it depends on their circumstances?
Yeah, it's it's positive to their to the residents because now they can have the ability to have a home that's in compliance with FEMA and potentially can get lower insurance rates.
Okay, so good job getting them lower. Okay, thank you. Doug.
I think you almost answered my question. I was trying to figure out what was good and what was bad. So if you explain it one more time. Somebody's at twenty-four previously, now they're at nineteen. That means that they have, the elevation has increased for their house? Or how does that work?
So if if they have, let's say they have, they're in a flood zone and the base foundation is twenty. Our new revisions say that the new elevation is eighteen. So that is good for them. Let's say someone is developing, is doing a remodel or doing something to that property, maybe building a new property along the coastline over there. They would have to adhere to the new base foot elevations, which is eighteen. And and be able to get insurance based on that base foot elevation. Somebody who has insurance already at that site and is already currently meeting that that those requirements may or may not see a change in in their insurance.
Okay. Paul?
I'll learn more about it.
Rob, is it fair to say that this was a result of them recalculating what happens to water when it hits a vertical seawall? As I recall, the originally they were counting the the maximum height to which water would fly when it hits a vertical seawall and putting the flood elevation at that high. Did they change the way they're calculating that?
Yes and no. So the the data that FEMA used to calculate the new base foot elevation was on aerial photogrammetry and it that kind of data is somewhat accurate, but not really accurate. And so what we did with those fourteen cross-sections is got physical survey data out from the ocean going all the way up the shoreline and and got really accurate cross-sectional data to support our findings. We also went through a series of modified calculations to get those base flows. And so yes and no means that no means they still calculate the base flood based on hitting the seawall and coming up, but it's just the different parameters now and different elevations in cross-sections of the coastline.
Thank you. Mary Ann, you had your arm up, I mean, your your hand up. Did you have a question or comment?
It was asked by another council member. Thank you.
Okay, so Rob, if I'm butchering this, please say so. But what I'm, what I'm hearing, if I understand this correctly, is that FEMA has determined that the flood risk exists at a lower level in many places than they previously had determined. First of all, exactly, okay. How does that square with sea rise? I mean, had they just ridiculously overestimated it in the past such that even with rise, it should be lower than they were saying? Or is there something going on here that our flood risk is actually lower than it used to be?
So it was, well, when they revised the maps, it substantially went up based on, because the the previous maps were done in two thousand and eight. And and they revised the maps in two thousand and seventeen, they went up substantially. And so we we reviewed the data, we saw that there were some areas where calculations could be done to lower it down to somewhere in between of what there was in two thousand and eight and.
Got it. Okay, so so on on average, the the levels have all gone up since the last official final map. But they went too far in their draft and we got them to ease back a little.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I understand that. Thank you.
There's one thing on sea level rising. Let me kind of just clear that up to you because you brought that up. FEMA doesn't take into consideration of of sea level rising. Their, their their, their calculations and their map revisions will constantly update and take into consideration of current sea level rising. So they're using current data rather than future data.
Okay, well, thanks for that report. I see no other questions. We'll move on to the next subject, which is written in oral communications from the public. I understand we have a fairly large number of public speakers, so without further ado, let's get into that.
Yes, you have forty speakers for this item. The first few are Sheila Moravati, Alicia Peak, Juan Carlos Lugo and Brittany Teague. We'll hear from Sheila first.
Good evening, Mayor Silverstein and council members. My name is Sheila Moravati. You may remember me from the plastic straw and cutlery ban that we worked on together several years ago. Since then, I've started an organization called Habits of Waste that highlights habitual behaviors that are causing harm to our planet many times unknowingly. Next slide, please. Thanks to the leadership of the city of Malibu, we launched a domino effect that denormalized plastic straws worldwide. Thanks to the many bans that happened subsequent to the wonderful ordinance that the city put together. Tonight, I would just like to revisit the idea of doing the same thing with balloons. I know this is something that the city was concerned with several years back. Next slide, please. Many people or well-meaning people are giving out balloons as gifts and joy and all those things are associated with it. In addition, there are these, this is a new popular fad where there's balloon releases where people are releasing millions of balloons into the atmosphere in an attempt to set records, to do celebratory events. And as you all know, what goes up must come down. Next slide, please. Fifteen billion balloons are sold in the United States per year and the Ocean Conservancy International Coastal Cleanup found over three hundred thousand balloons along our US beaches and coastlines. Next slide, please. The damage is immense. These latex balloons look like food to many of our marine animals and they're ingesting them only to cause blockages. And of course die off. These strings that are attached to balloons are also causing a lot of damage to many birds, turtles, sea life, because it just asphyxiates them. It is a very unfortunate piece of trash that continues to show up on our beaches. And if it is not killing an animal, it does break down into microplastics, which then, as you all know, causes other problems and ends up in our waste stream. So it is a big nuisance, but unfortunately balloons come with a lot of joy. So this is something that many people don't know about. Next slide, please. Ultimately, our balloons are polluting our oceans and environment, killing sea life. Mylar balloons are a particular safety hazard that can cause power outages and spark fires when in contact with power lines. I'd like to request that the city of Malibu please revisit the ban on plastic balloons and Mylar latex, all of the above, and create the change so that many cities worldwide once again can hear what what the city of Malibu does. I was quite inspired by the city of Laguna Beach. The city of Laguna Beach's recent ban and I felt that being a beach community like ours, we should also step forward and pioneer more these types of changes to protect our oceans and sea life and ultimately the world. Thank you so much. I'm open to questions if there is room for that.
Thank you, Sheila. The way it'll work is if if anyone has a question, they'll ask it after all the public comment is concluded.
Thank you so much for the time.
Our next speaker is Alicia Peak, followed by Juan Carlos Lugo, Brittany Teague, Ally Moses and John Alphano.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Dear council members and staff, first I want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for your hard work and dedication to our beloved city. I feel beyond blessed and fortunate to call Malibu my home. I'm speaking tonight as a Parks and Rec Commissioner, mother, coach, teacher and longtime Malibu resident. I had the luxury of growing up in Malibu Little League and spending every cent of my piggy bank at the snack shack, buying that cheeseburger and oh, that Big League chew. Just how much can you get in your mouth? A place where all the kids, no matter what team, you could come together, share a burger, hot dog, trade candy and just enjoy the community of softball. Last spring, our commission agendized the disrepair of the snack shack in need for a remodel. Unfortunately, after multiple commission meetings and staff hours spent, we were told that the LCP does not include a concession stand in its table of uses. This is not okay and needs to be changed immediately. There is a permit from nineteen eighty-six, the year I was born, for a concession stand that was approved by the coastal commission. This is five years prior to Malibu Cityhood. Why do the kids of Malibu not have access to what every other city and coastal town across the US has? A concession stand to buy and sell food during sports games. More than ever, kids need a space to be kids, to connect away from devices and social media. We need a space where kids can sit down and share a burger and debrief the highlights and lowlights of their games. A space where my second and kindergartners can learn about money, service and hard work. I worked countless hours as a kid in the snack shack, connecting with my enemies off the field and learning the skills that are so often overlooked in schools. Malibu is a small town with not many outlets for our youth. The snack shack has been an institution before Malibu was even a city. And now that we are a city, how can we take this away from our youth? I beg and plead with this council to update the tables of use for our LCP to include a concession stand. Why should we rely on outside food truck vendors when our community is more than capable and willing to take this on ourselves? And all the money will go directly back to Little, Little League and our kids. Please do this for the kids and youth of this town. They need it more than you know. I would like to ask that for all those that are in favor of the snack shack and for what I am saying, to please raise your hand on the icon reaction feature at the bottom of your right of your Zoom. There's a lot of people on here, so I figured that if we can have those people raise their hand that are in favor, that would save the council members a lot of time.
So let me make the suggestion. I believe the hand raised feature is not shown to the public. It can be seen by the city council members. If you want to repeat that request, perhaps the city clerk can read the names that have their hands raised and that may or may not impact what people want to say afterwards.
Mayor, would you like me to read all of those names with raised hands?
Please do.
Okay. If you give me one moment here, we have John. That seems to be about right. So the raised hands I can see in Zoom at the moment are John Alfonno, Linda Seltzer, Edward, Mike Usnes, Pantellis, Professor Pamela Ullik, Ally Moses, Erin, Joel Dunn, Jenny Rosinko, Callie Usnes, T Jennings, Laura Rosenthal, Juan Carlos Lugo, Heather Pitts, Amy Lingo, Shannon Raven, Ravensphere, Karen Al Harden, iPhone, Susan Downey, Tyler Muir, Brittany Teague, Rhonda Three Six Four Four Raw, Jake Lingo, Wade Major, Howard, John Ransier, Dan Scopehammer, Melissa Solano, Josh Spiegel, Maggie Castle. And those are all of the raised hands at the moment in Zoom. It's about thirty-one hands.
Thank you very much, Kelsey, and thank you, Alicia, for that suggestion. Obviously, anyone who still wishes to speak, who signed up or wants to raise their hand is welcome to do so. So let's move on to the next speaker.
Yes, if you give us one moment here to put things in order, our next speaker is Juan Carlos Lugo, followed by Brittany Teague, Alice Moses, Ally Moses, and John Alfonno.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Hi, this is Juan Carlos Lugo. I just wanna, I'm gonna keep it short and sweet. I support everything Alicia Peak has said. I believe we need to amend the LCP. The kids need a place to congregate. They need a place to just have face-to-face interactions. That's all the studies with screens and everything. We, we need kids to, to be kids again, to be around each other and to just interact and be a part of the community. So I, I fully support that and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Don't know what happened to Heather, but it looks like Brittany Teague is next.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I didn't realize I was muted. Our next speaker is Brittany Teague, followed by Ally Moses, John Alfonno, and Jake Lingo. Brittany, you should see a pop-up ask you to unmute if you're ready to make a comment. Brittany may have stepped away, so we can try to come back to her and we can hear from Ally Moses next, followed by John Alfonno, Jake Lingo, and Tyler Muir.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for taking the time to listen to everybody's comments. I also am here to just second what Alicia Peak and Juan Carlos have both said and expressed my support in favor of reinstating the Malibu Little League snack shack. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ally.
Our next speaker is John Alfonno, followed by Jake Lingo, Tyler Muir, and Laura Agnotti.
Hi, my name is John Alfonno. I'm here with my son Gianni Alfonno, who's playing his fourth year in Malibu Little League. We got hooked on Little League as soon as we got into it. Playing baseball and softball. I have two girls, so I have three kids that have gone through the system. I'm actually the vice president of Malibu Little League. That's how much I believe in it and what it's done to this community. We have two hundred and seventy kids that are now involved. It's really a sense of community, what happens out there on the field. And it's how we've met a lot of families and how we've met a lot of kids and my kids have friends and I think I almost know everybody in this community. And I walk into stores and grocery stores and see kids that I coached and they refer to me as what's up, Coach John. And there's a real sense of pride. But what we found out as we've been trying to grow Little League and we've been going to other cities like Santa Monica and West LA that do not have the background or the backdrop or the most beautiful gorgeous field with the ocean in the background. We found that the snack shack is actually the heart of Little League. And why the snack shack is so important, it's because that's where the kids go to hang out. Right? That's where they go to bond. That's where they go to spend time. That's where they build relationships. That's where they learn to get their, maybe their first job and work. They get to flip burgers. They get to sell merchandise. They get to exchange money and learn how to count and get some life lessons around people and get a real experience of what it's like to be in a community. And it's a shame that we don't have this. It's a shame that we're even talking about that this is something that we have to vote for. It's also a shame that this is gonna take like three years or something to get done. We needed a snack shack. It needs to be on whatever it needs to be on that you guys need to do. But this is the center of Little League. And this is something that's grown really fast here in Malibu and it's affected my family. And I'm, I have three kids, so I'm there all the entire day, nine o'clock to three o'clock. Food is a real issue. It's a safety issue that I've got to think about going down on the weekend to get on PCA with my kids, load them all up in the van to go get food. It'd be so much easier if it was there and we could just hang out and they could see their friends. But I'm gonna give my son an opportunity who's ten years old and in his third year of what it would mean for him to have a snack shack.
Hi, my name's Gianni. I've been playing baseball for a long time in Malibu Little League and I'd really love it if we could have a snack shack because talking to your friends is a great time and it's fun. And after playing baseball and you win, you can just talk about your victory. And that's what, it's fun. And I, thank you.
Be nice to have a grill there so we can eat healthier food and bag chips and Gatorade and that type of thing. So please, please, please put this back on to where it needs to be so that we can have this. We're Malibu for goodness sakes.
Thank you both for your comments.
Our next speaker is Jake Lingo, followed by Tyler Muir, Laura Agnotti, Laura Rosenthal, and Pamela Conley Ullik.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you. My name is Jake Lingo and I'm a resident of Malibu, father of two school-aged children, Malibu Little League Board Member, AYSO Coach, and frequent patron of Bluffs Park. Tonight, we come to you to ask for your consideration to invest in upgrading your community by building a new snack shack at the Bluffs. For many Malibu families, Bluffs Park is a second home. It's a place on cold autumn nights where we spend practicing soccer, a place on warm spring mornings spent cheering on our Little Leaguers as we gaze out over the Pacific Ocean. I can still remember my daughter's first T-ball game at Bluffs Park. I was walking her out to her game and I stopped dead in my tracks and I took in the beauty of the place. And I asked her, do you know how fortunate you are to play T-ball here? She kind of looked at me confused, as you would expect a five-year-old little girl to do. She said, what do you mean, Daddy? I said, I grew up playing ball in the middle of a dirt field out near a farm on the outskirts of my hometown. It was hot and dusty. I go, and you get to play here. This is just absolutely amazing. Although my upbringing didn't have me playing ball on the bluff looking over the Pacific Ocean, my Little League field was special. I have the fondest memories of playing games and just hanging out at the fields. I used to beg my parents on evenings that I didn't have practice or a game to drop me off so I could hang out with my buddies and watch other games or a pickup game on one of the fields not being used. And at the center of all this magic was a simple snack shack. It was a gathering spot for the community. The parents volunteered their time and they served us hot dogs and Frito boats and soda pop. And if we had a good game, the coach would buy us ice cream. It served hot cocoa for cold nights and cold Gatorade for the blistering hot days of summer. It even had clean restrooms with running water. I love that place. It's one of the many reasons I have introduced the game of Little League, baseball and softball to my children. Malibu deserves this same simple luxury of a snack shack, a place for families to eat and gather. In fact, Bluffs Park always had a snack shack until recently, when the original simple shack fell into such disrepair that it can no longer safely serve food. We attempted to work with city staff to replace this existing snack shack and were told that the use was not allowed in this zone and that Bluffs can no longer have a snack shack. This, this doesn't seem right. We have one of the most beautiful venues in all of Little League and some of the most subpar amenities. There's no food being served by parents. There are no rewards of ice cream on site. And there are two overused porta potties that serve as bathrooms. We can do better. We need a facility that lives up to the scenic beauty of our beloved Bluffs Park. We asked that the city council direct staff to allow a snack shack at Bluffs Park and to invest the time and money necessary to build a proper, permanent facility at Bluffs that will serve Little League, AYSO, and the skate park. A place where kids and adults can gather in their community and share a warm meal, have fun, and learn important life lessons. A place to make memories that will last a lifetime. With that, council members, I will thank you for your time and appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Jake.
And Mayor, our next few speakers, Tyler Muir, I don't see him in the meeting, or Laura Agnotti anymore. Laura Rosenthal has notified me she no longer needs to speak. So our next speaker present is Pamela Conley Ullik, followed by Heather Pitts, Susan Downey, and Shannon Ravensphere. Pamela, you should see a pop-up asking you to unmute.
Hi, good evening. This is Pamela Ullik. Thank you, city council members and Alicia Peak and John and everyone who spoke. I am so in awe of all of you and how much you love Malibu. I cannot believe that this snack shack is even an issue tonight. It just seems almost un, well, it is unbelievable that the city of Malibu is not stepping in to make sure that we can offer this amenity for not only the children and the visitors, but for all of Malibu and everyone to connect. In addition, I wanted to also speak about the Malibu Urgent Care Facility and how that facility is in need of our community's support. More information is forthcoming, but I am helping with the Friends of Malibu Urgent Care. We are going to be doing a million-dollar fundraiser in the next year. Dr. Katz, Dr. Pike, as many of you know, have saved so many people from heart issues to fingers being chopped off. And if we don't take care of this facility, it won't be here. So when our kids get hurt if they're surfing or playing ball, they're gonna have to go all the way to Santa Monica or in the valley to get taken care of. So I'm just raising that issue now. I look forward to sharing more information with you as it becomes available, but we really do need each other, not only with the snack shack, but with the urgent care. We need to take care of each other. We need to make sure we're looking out for each other. And I know the city council can do something. They, they can allocate funds for the snack shack. They can go in and change the, they can go to the coastal commission, get this changed. So it is allowed use. It's unbelievable that we're spending our time tonight even discussing this. In my opinion, it should have never happened this way. So thanks again to the Parks and Rec Commission, Alicia, for spearheading that initiative and everyone for standing up tonight. I'm just in awe of all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Our next speaker is Heather Pitts, followed by Susan Downey, Shannon Ravensphere, Wade Major, and M. Skelton.
Heather, we cannot hear you.
Heather, your audio is very low. If you're able to try and switch to another microphone perhaps or adjust how close it is to you. We may be able to try coming back to Heather and see if she's able to work out that technical difficulty. Our next speaker is Susan Downey, followed by Shannon Ravensphere, Wade Major, and M. Skelton.
This is Susan Downey. I'm honestly here just to listen in and give my support to the snack shack. As John Alfonno said, and we can reiterate, Little League has changed our lives in Malibu. Both my kids are participating this year. It was my son's first experience being on a team sport. He did it last year. He did fall ball. It's the thing he looks forward to every week, multiple times a week. And anything that we can do to continue to make that glorious bluff, even a better destination is gonna help everybody. So thank you for listening.
Thank you, Susan. Heather, I, I see that Heather Pitts' hand is up. Maybe she has fixed her problem?
We will ask her to unmute again. Heather, you are in, I, I couldn't hear her there when she was unmuted. She may still be having issues. We can hear from Shannon Ravensphere next, followed by Wade Major, M. Skelton, and Melissa Solano.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Hi, I didn't know I was gonna speak, but I'll just say that I'm a mother of two Little Leaguers and I agree with everything that was previously said. I do feel it's important to have a snack shack to bring kids and families together. I think the kids really need this to bond and they get hungry. And sometimes it's just nice for them to sit with their families and friends and look at the ocean view while they're doing baseball. Please consider this for our community and thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Shannon.
Our next two speakers were Wade Major and M. Skelton. I don't see either of them in the meeting, so we'll move on and see if we can circle back to them. Our next speaker is Melissa Solano, followed by Karen Al Harden, Amora Magna, and Amy Lingo.
Good evening, city council members and Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the time tonight and I appreciate my fellow friends who are parents advocating on behalf of the snack shack. I echo the sentiments of John Alfonno, Jake Lingo, and so many others. I understand that some folks said that we shouldn't even be having this conversation within the community because it should be a right and not a request. But sometimes we have to go through these things in order to have these amazing resources happen. So I am appreciative of this evening and having the opportunity to speak on it. I do believe that we have a beautiful facility at Bluffs Park that our kids are able to enjoy. For the past several years, the community has suffered with losing out on families. And the fact that we've just blossomed with an abundance of new families, we should be blossoming our community by providing these resources and having a snack shack and so many other things that our community needs. We're one of the wealthiest zip codes in the entire world. And the fact that we don't have this type of resource, it's a, it's a bit disappointing. You know, you can go over to Culver City, Agoura Hills, and you can find these resources. And we should be able to facilitate that, not only just appease the adults and the most affluent folks in the community. We should be taking care of the future and that future is the children of this community. On top of that, you know, we are teaching these kids entrepreneurship. And how beautiful is that if we can be able to provide that opportunity within our own backyard? Giving these kids the, just like John said, the outlet to learn what it is to manage and run a business successfully and efficiently. But all, not only that, just having parents enjoy this moment with their parent, with their children, because as Jake said it best, we are spending our entire day there. And the fact that we don't have anything to provide for our children and also ourselves, it's a bit dismal and disappointing. So even though this should have been a given, I am gonna support and stand alongside everybody in asking the request that we really move ahead and spearhead this movement forward. And hopefully it doesn't have to take three years and we can get really savvy and figure out how we can expedite this snack shack even sooner because our community is only growing as, as we stand tall here and Malibu's strong. So let's just get behind this. All right. I appreciate your time tonight and hope everybody has a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Our next two speakers, Karen Al Harden and Amora Magna. I don't see them in the meeting under those names. So we'll see if we can circle back to them later and we'll hear from Amy Lingo, followed by Linda Seltzer and Paul Clark.
Hi there, everyone. This is Amy Lingo. I'm just on here to support Malibu Little League and all my parents and all our Little League kiddos. I love Bluffs Park. I love baseball and softball. I love Bluffs Park. I love baseball and softball, and I love snacks and to eat. So it would be really convenient to pass this and get it done, and looking forward to hanging out with everyone at the field. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy.
Our next speaker is Linda Seltzer, followed by Paul Clark, Pantellus Callis, Kalin Usnes, and Nick Shergott.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Thank you. I would just love to reiterate everything that John Alfano said. I'm a Malibu mom. I've got a kid in Little League. I just love everything about the Malibu Little League, and the coaches are fantastic. The kids get a place to bond with each other, and as has been previously mentioned, it's a place for them to hang out. It's a place for them to volunteer their time and learn how to add and subtract and, and help and, and buy things and just have a place to hang out with their friends. It is amazing that this is an issue, that all of these hands are raised to do something that seems like a no-brainer that there's not a snack shack at the Little League and soccer. So I fully support, if there's any way this can be expedited, or strings pulled, or whatever needs to be done to get this done quickly, it would be really appreciated. Thank you so much, everybody, for your time.
Thank you, Linda.
And Mayor, I don't, I don't see our next speaker, Paul Clark, in the meeting. We are admitting the speaker after that, Pantellus Callis, right now, so we'll see if we can get them to unmute, and then we'll hear from Kalin Usnes, Nick Shergott, and Norman Haney. Pantellus, you should see a pop-up asking you to unmute. They're not responding, so they may not be available at the moment, so we can move on to Kalin Usnes and circle back.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
We can.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to hear about this issue that really greatly affects the Malibu Little League community. I had three older brothers growing up, and I spent a lot of time at Little League in the valley, and one of my fondest memories was getting to work the snack shack with my mom. And now that I have two boys, I'm basically at Bluffs every single day. I have one boy that's now engineers and another that is playing for the high school, but is still at Bluffs Park as an umpire. So I'm there every day, and when the kids are there, they need to eat. And I've had the luxury of working with some of the volunteers, the student volunteers. And what I've noticed is that the snack shack allows them to learn life skills that they wouldn't learn otherwise. Like, like someone else said, dealing with money, customer service, and serving their community by volunteering. And I think it's an important way for kids to learn to be service and community-minded. I know for a fact that some kids and some adults come to the games for the snack shack specifically, and we've had players and parents from other communities who come and ask where our snack shack is. And it's a little embarrassing and sad to be able to tell them that we don't have one to serve the community. So I'd really love to be able to bring that back, to be able to offer that to not only our patrons at the Little League, but also to the kids, so that they can learn to serve their community and be part of the community and give back. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kalin.
Our next speaker is Nick Shergott, followed by Norman Haney, Rhonda Scott, and Mike Usnes.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Nick Shergott. I'm the president of Malibu Little League. Have been a coach for probably thirty-five different teams over the last eleven years, have three kids in the schools. I just want to give you a little bit of background. I think everyone's done a nice job of eloquently describing why we need the snack shack. I'll just give you guys a little bit of background on the growth of the league. The fires of 2018 really decimated the league. In the spring of 2019, we were down to about a hundred kids total in the league. And we grew a little bit after that, and then with COVID, we ran into obviously other issues with families moving out. And so in 2001, we were still at like a hundred and twenty-five kids. Through the effort of a lot of great volunteers and parents and kids, we're up to about two hundred and seventy-five kids right now, so not quite triple, but pretty close. And the league is, really has a lot of momentum, and I think this is a big piece of continuing the momentum of, of getting baseball kind of reborn in Malibu. It's a, it's a league with a lot of great history stretching back to nineteen fifty-seven. And I think we're on the cusp of reaching, you know, three hundred kids, three hundred and fifty kids, and being super competitive, which is important for keeping kids in Malibu and wanting to play for their, for their hometown team instead of going to play club or travel. And I think that also wraps into having them stay in the Malibu public schools. I think the more you can keep kids in Malibu AYSO and Malibu Little League, the more chance you have to keep them in Malibu schools. And snack shack is a big piece. I know if you don't have kids that play sports, or you don't play sports, you didn't grow up with sports, you don't totally understand, you know, why a snack shack is such a big deal, but having, you know, spent so much of my life coaching over the last ten or eleven years and visiting so many parks, it really is a huge deal. And as folks said, it's really the meeting point for a lot of kids after the games, before the games, kind of rehashing what went right and what went wrong. So it's a really, it's a big part of the sporting experience. And, you know, would also allow us to potentially host tournaments, which would be a great way for other communities to experience kind of the magic of Bluffs Park. If you don't have a functional snack shack, you really can't host tournaments, and so getting a functional snack shack would allow us to host teams from La Dara and Santa Monica and North Venice, Pasadena. And so it could be a great experience for people in different communities. And again, I think a few other people have mentioned it could benefit AYSO, could benefit patrons of the skate park. It just seems like a great, a great amenity for the city, for the kids. Thanks.
Thank you, Nick.
Our next speaker is Norm Haney, followed by Rhonda Scott, Mike Usnes, and Bracken Carter Webb. Norm, you should see a pop-up asking you to unmute.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can, Norm. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you very much. First of all, I want to thank you all for your service to the city. I know how much work goes into preparing for each one of the city council meetings. And I want you to know that the people in Malibu truly appreciate it. I'm also strongly in favor of the snack shack. I also played baseball in Little League, and I agree with all the speakers that there should be a way to interpret the recreational standards that would allow a snack shack while it's being processed through the city of Malibu to confirm Malibu's interpretation. The primary reason I'm calling is because ordinance four ninety-one was specifically approved for the Sea View Hotel. And it states that if the coastal commission makes any modifications to the project that the city approved, that it will be brought before the city council at the earliest possible date. I'm sure you all know that the commission approved the hotel unanimously on February the eighth. And if there's any way that I can get on an agenda for March, it is very important to me. It's also important to the city. If you do a quick analysis on the funds raised by the transient occupancy tax, you'll find that for each week the project is not moving forward, is a week that it doesn't open for business. And that week will cost the city approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in transient occupancy tax. Anyway, I wish you would consider it, and if there's any way to kind of push the planning department to get it on the agenda, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much for your time again. And I hope you approve the snack shack some way in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm.
Our next speaker, Rhonda Scott, doesn't appear to be in the meeting. Oh, and I'm sorry, I thought our speaker after that, Mike Usnes, was in the meeting, but it appears he just left. If you give me one moment. Our speaker after that, Bracken Carter Webb, also appears to have left the meeting. The next speaker present in the meeting is Josh Spiegel. And after him, we'll hear from Dane Scopehammer and Phaedra Pantosis.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you fine, Josh.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council, and staff. Before I talk about the snack shack, I wanted to bring something up. You know, every once in a while, I think it's important to shout out people who contribute to this, to this city in extraordinary way, and someone who doesn't get talked about enough. That someone is Merrill May. I don't know if you know Merrill, but that guy just does outstanding work for our city, and I just wanted to publicly thank him. So anyway, moving on, you know, I think this snack shack, look, it's, it's quickly becoming apparent that you're probably all in favor of that. You're probably all saying, yeah, hey, let's get something done. But I'm a big fan of goals. About a month ago, I came and I spoke to the city council, and I said, hey, let's get this done. Haven't seen it come on the agenda. So as a matter of consensus, you could instruct staff to bring something back. Basically, whenever you want it. So I'm proposing this. You instruct the city manager and staff to put this on the very first April meeting that you have to amend the LCP, do whatever you need to do to allow the snack shack up there. Then we figure out a way to put something temporary up there for this summer, for this summer, while we make plans for a permanent structure there. Now, that'll also obviously accomplish our snack shack goal. But what I'll also do is convince some of the residents that we are not completely dysfunctional. This city is completely dysfunctional. We can't really accomplish anything. My dad just got his certificate of occupancy, two hundred and twenty-two weeks exactly, from Woolsey, and I don't know, it's pretty pathetic. But let's show the community that we can build or just have a snack shack. I mean, what are we really talking about here? It's just, it's a snack shack. We gotta have it. Let's get it this summer. We need bold goals and bold action. And if there's anyone who agrees with me in this meeting, raise your hand and show the council how you feel. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Dane Scopehammer, followed by Phaedra Panatzas, Tim Para, and Timothy Keenan.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Dane Scopehammer. I'm a Parks Commissioner. I'm a father and a coach. I'm also, I was also a player who went to Malibu Little League. And I just wanted to be real brief here because I'm going to be speaking later, but that, that snack shack was a quintessential part of the Little League experience, and you know, you, you could drop your kids off in the morning and not come back until the afternoon, or not worry about them until the afternoon, as long as, as long as there was something to eat. And all we would do all day long is play baseball and eat cheeseburgers, and it was a pretty good, pretty good deal. And I think that, you know, to try to move forward with, with something as soon as we possibly can is the right thing to do. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Dane.
I don't believe our next speaker, Phaedra, is in the meeting any longer, and the speaker after her, Tim Para, also appears to have left the meeting, so our next speaker will be Timothy Keenan, followed by Tina Jennings, Anna Gorbey, and Howard Rzuski. Tim, you should see a pop-up asking you to unmute.
Hi, are you there?
We hear you, Timothy.
Yeah, hi, I'm Tim Keenan. I'm a lifelong member of this community, and I went to, I played baseball up at the Bluffs, and I flipped burgers there, and it was just such an amazing place to be and to grow up. And it's just so sad that it's not there anymore. So let's do what we can to get it back. And that's it.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
You give me one moment, Mayor. I'm looking for our next speaker. It appears Tina Jennings has left the meeting. I don't see Anna Gorbey in the meeting, so our next speaker is Howard Rzuski, followed by Aaron Garnaro and Jenny Resinko.
Hello. The shack is where young people become great human beings, great Malibu citizens, build lifelong friendships. This brings families to live in our community. We know how to get creative. Let's get creative and get this done ASAP. Thank you.
Thanks, Howard.
Our next speaker, Aaron Garnaro, does not appear to be in the meeting. Our next speaker is Jenny Resinko, and I would ask anyone who's raised their hand in Zoom that if you don't intend to speak, to please lower your hand, otherwise next we'll start calling on those who have raised their hands. Jenny, you should see a pop-up asking you to unmute.
Okay, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you great.
Great, thank you. Okay, thank you, city council. I am here in support of the snack shack and I'm grateful to all the parents who spoke and support everything that they said, and in favor of bringing it back. So please, whatever we need to do to get the snack shack back, let's do it. I also am one hundred percent in support of the balloon ban that Sheila has, is proposing. I did not know that someone was working on that. I am so grateful to hear about Sheila, the work that she is doing. I do not look at balloons with joy. I do not buy balloons for my kids. I don't give balloons. I've picked up way too many balloons on the beach. And I really hope that our city can set the example by banning balloons. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jenny.
Okay, Mayor, and if you can give me a moment here, we'll try to work through those who have raised their hands and not yet spoken. I am going to be checking a few lists as we go to make sure we are not calling anyone twice. But it looks like our next speaker with the raised hand will be John Rancier. John, you should see a pop-up asking you to unmute if you'd like to speak. And we're not getting a response from John, so if he does not wish to speak, our next speaker appears to be Scott Dietrich with the raised hand.
Thank you, Mayor Silverstein and council. I'm actually planning to sign, speak on a later issue having to do with public works, but as I listen to everyone speaking in favor of the snack shack, I'd just like to remind everyone about our vision statement, and our vision statement's very clear that we give up amenities that would be common in other cities in favor of keeping Malibu rural. And I think that's really an important consideration. Given that, it seems like having a snack shack is probably something that the community would favor. Certainly, the people involved in Little League do, but it seems appropriate because it impacts the kids here, and we want families in Malibu. And as Josh Spiegel mentioned, if we have to wait four or five years to get it, it makes us look it makes us look fairly inept. So I'm wondering if we had some sort of a mobile cooking facility, you see the snack trucks all over and they have really good food, that that may be a way to get this thing done. So you'd have it this summer and I would support that. I believe that if this takes, you know, three or four years, five years, which it could easily do, we end up looking foolish. Also, I wanted to address this proposed balloon ban. I think we have to be very wise in what we're doing. We certainly can get rid of the most damaging balloons. But taking balloons away from kids, that's really extreme. And so if you ban them and you can't buy them in Ralphs, oh, you can go and buy them in Vons. Does that help anything? But we could certainly ban multiple releases, which we saw pictures of. And we might want to ban anything Mylar. But to ban all balloons makes us look like the Grinch who stole Christmas. So thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
And next, it looks like we can circle back to Amora Magna with the raised hand. Amora, you should see a pop-up ask you to unmute if you're ready to speak. Amora does not seem to be responding to the pop-up. So we can also try to circle back to Laura Agnadi. Or Ann Gotti.
Hello. Hello.
Hey, we can hear you.
Oh, good. Hi, everyone. My name is Laura. I run Malibu Little League softball. And I support all the speakers and I support amending the LCP for the snack shack. Can everyone in the meeting please raise your hand in support of the snack shack if you support this? This would provide a safe community gathering space. And this is an incredibly important fundraising tool for Malibu Little League. The money would stay with our kids and stay with our community. And let's just face it, it's really fun to have a snack shack. And I get really hungry when I'm there from 8:30 till 4:00 PM. So please, please help us get this off the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
And then if everyone who raised their hand and has already spoken or does not intend to speak, if you could please lower your hand and we'll finish public comment here.
Heather, let me suggest that there've been a number of people you've called on that have not responded. Let's just skip them and call on the people who have not yet been called on, full stop.
Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorting it out as we go. But Edward would be a new speaker with a raised hand who we have not called on or heard from yet.
Yes.
Edward, you should see a pop-up ask you to unmute if you'd like to speak. I'm not getting a response from Edward. So the only speaker with a raised hand we have not called on yet is the one under iPhone. So we'll ask them to unmute and see if they're one of the speakers we called earlier.
Oh, hey, guys. I guess I'm the guy with the iPhone. This is Jayman. Yeah, this all means a lot to me on the snack shack. I couldn't agree more with everything that's been said. And I echo from John to Jake, Heather, etc. It's, you know, growing up, I played a lot of sports and particularly baseball, growing up in Montreal. And if we had, you know, a very basic snack shack, it would have made an amazing experience that much better. So we have an opportunity here to do something pretty simple and would just really raise the profile and the excitement of what's already based here. So that's all. Thanks for the time.
Thank you, Jay. All right, Heather, let's just do Heather Pitts and give Amora and John one more chance to respond and otherwise call it quits.
Okay, sounds good. We'll ask Heather Pitts to unmute again.
Hi, I hope you can hear me this time.
You can.
Sorry, sorry about the technology issue earlier. Hi, I'm a member of the community. I'm also one of the coaches and I'm on the board for Malibu Little League. But I just wanted to share with you because I think it's so important is sort of the perspective from the kids. I know a lot of people have spoken to that, but you know, there's one, you know, Little League's so much fun, but there was one really magical day last spring and it was, and it sounds crazy, but it was the day that the managers and coaches were handed these little envelopes from the board. And they had like $10 worth of tickets in them for the kids to spend at the snack shack. And you would have thought those little envelopes were full of gold. The kids were so excited. They literally took off running faster than they ran in any other practice that we ever had and they ran straight for the snack shack. And they traded tickets, they shared tickets. But the most beautiful thing was at the snack shack, there were kids with every jersey on. Like, that's where they all come back together and they have a great time and they have fun. And truly, it sounds crazy, but those little tickets were magical for those kids. And they just truly enjoy that opportunity. And I would just love that we can do whatever we can as a community to ensure that our kids have that. And thank you so much for supporting us and helping us with this.
Thank you, Heather. Glad you got your communication issue there solved.
And we'll try Amora Magna one more time and then see if we have to help lower her hand. Amora, you should see a pop-up ask you to unmute if you'd like to speak. And then Amora did not respond. So we'll check with Edward once more. And then I am seeing one new raised hand, Mayor, if Edward's unavailable.
I see that. There's two more.
We have tried calling John once before, but we can try again.
Yeah, we'll give him one last opportunity.
Okay, I'm not getting a response from Edward. So our next new speaker would be Maggie Castle.
Hi, this is Maggie Castle. Yeah, I'm just agreeing with everybody on the call. I've been living in Malibu for five years. My son plays Little League. And it's been a great opportunity for us to be part of the community in a lot of ways. And, you know, being new to Malibu, it's not just about like Nobu and Soho House and the Kardashians and all that garbage. It's really what I've come to realize. This is my first time ever living in a small town and you know, there's something really ideal and quaint we've got going on here with all the families who are living here and all the kids that are participating in all the, you know, city of Malibu activities and the Boys and Girls Club and the Little Leagues and the AYSO. And you know, that's the slice of life that we need to be focused on. You know, Malibu's, it's big and it's fancy, but it's also about the details and it's also about the the families that like live here on the day-to-day. That it's not just like vacation houses, but it's really like the people who are here day in, day out. You know, supporting the public schools, supporting these activities. And, you know, I always think that there's a lot to be said for details and a snack shack is a small thing. But ultimately, you know, it's those sort of quaint, quintessential Americana kind of things that I think are the difference between other places you can live. And, you know, what makes Malibu so great and awesome and lovely and really for my kids has been just such a home run, pun intended, I guess. But yeah, it's just, it's just one more thing that just as we're sitting there every weekend at the snack shack, it's my little guy has made so many friends in different grades just hanging out and being part of the community. And that's really what it's about. It's not about a snack shack. It's not about, you know, that. It's really about the kids hanging out and thinking about the families that live here day in, day out, supporting this community. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Maggie.
And Mayor, it looks like John actually lowered his hand, but we did have one new speaker sign up from Bill Sampson. So we'll hear from him next.
Good evening. I got here pretty late, as Kelsey just indicated. My apologies for that. And I missed some of the earlier festivities on this topic. But two weeks ago, someone from Mr. Edmiston's office came and there was going to be, said there'd be someone here at every meeting. I would like to invite whoever came from Mr. Edmiston's office and Mr. Edmiston to come out to our neighborhood after any warm weekend. And they can, I would like to have them pick up the broken bottles, empty cans, trash, used diapers and used condoms spread around our neighborhood by their beach invitees. Next, if if the president of the Little League would, well, never mind, says, I'll just tell some of these people, I have a thought on a trailer, a cook trailer. I don't know if it still exists or I can get my hands on it. But I will try, I will contact the president of the Little League if I'm lucky on that one. Don't count on it. But I know where there was one. Second, for more than three months, I listened to a story from a kindly banker describing the consulting business as consisting of someone who you would hire to find out what time it was and who would then depart with your watch. His running mate persistently said that she wished to bring the city together and end the divisiveness and rancor, particularly among council members, some of whom you may recall spent the last two years engaged in personal attacks on one of the other council members. Three months later, after installation, Ms. Riggins asked Mr. Irving to resign from a subcommittee because he was doing his job. He was trying to keep the consultant from running off with our watch. I think that's his job. As a citizen and a taxpayer, I wanted to keep an eye on stuff like that. If that hurts somebody on staff's feelings, I am very sorry. I don't have anything whatsoever against Mr. McClary. But if Mr. Irving thinks he's not doing his job, Mr. Irving ought to speak up. I don't want a consultant running off of my watch. Not at all. I think the apology probably goes the other way. The apology should be to the taxpayers who, after all, are involved in this and it's our watch. And we are owed an apology for an attack upon Mr. Irving, who, after all, was a top vote getter what, three and a half years ago? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
And Mayor, that was our last speaker sign up. And I don't see any raised hands from anyone indicating they would like to speak. I did also go through this participant list to search for those speakers who were not present earlier and I still cannot find them in the meeting. So that concludes public comments.
Great job, Kelsey. Thank you. That brings us to Commissioner Committee and City Manager updates. Do we have any commission or committee updates?
Yes, we have Dane Scopehammer signed up to speak.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Dane Scopehammer, the Parks and Rec Chair. Tonight, I will provide you with an update on a few items we've been working on for the past several months. The snack shack. The Commission received an update from Malibu Bluff Snack Shack in August 2022. And by a majority vote, recommended the city council replace the current snack shack at the Bluffs with a like-for-like structure. We understand concerns regarding the zoning, but hope the city council can add this to the work plan for the next fiscal year 23, 24. We also worked on the aquatics and recreation center. And in October 2022, the Commission reviewed options for a multi-generational recreation center with library services and a swimming pool to utilize library set aside funds. The Commissioner favored council to look into the possibilities of adding these facilities to the Heather Cliff property and requested the city council add this to the work plan for 2023, 2024. In addition to these items, Commission received the Earth Friendly Management Policy Quarterly Report. Two commissioners met monthly to discuss the earth-friendly management policy, outreach opportunities and website updates. The council will receive an update on the EFMP at future meetings, at a future meeting. Last week, the Commission voted to recommend Sarah Wan as the 2023 recipient of the Jay Kurugian Citizenship Award. A recommendation will be provided to you at a future council meeting. We have worked to install nature cameras at Charmley Wilderness Park, Legacy Park. Wildlife videos and photos are on social media and on the city's website. This year, the Commission plans to review and work on park safety, public education, native habitats, field space options and recreation options for the city. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions and I'll be available at the end of 6B to answer any questions there, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Dane. Are there any other commission or committee updates?
That was our only Commissioner Committee update.
Yeah, that brings us to the City Manager update. And Steve McClary, I'm going to ask you and I'm going to ask all the city council members as well in view of the lengthy public comment tonight, if we could try to keep the next few presentations as short as possible, that would be great. So we can get on to other business.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I will try to be as brief and condensed as possible of this. First off, we did put some information out to the public last week that there is going to be some changes coming up for brush clearance. We are going to have a speaker come at the, in fact, Chief Smith will be at the next city council meeting to give some more detail on this. In essence, in previous years, about 4,100 homes have been receiving brush clearance notices. And county fires expecting that number to go up to about 5,600 this year. Also, beginning in 2024, fire department will begin enforcing AB 374, which is requiring a removal of vegetation from a certain defensible space from structures. So we will have Chief Smith here to give a presentation and answer questions on that at the next council meeting. Also, really quickly, I wanted to touch on the state fire severity maps are expected to be out this spring. Well, we do not anticipate it changing any areas within the city limits. As you well know, the entire city is currently in a very high fire severity zone. So we're not expecting any changes there. COVID report, I will be brief. There's not been any major changes there in terms of the stats. But just real quickly, right now, our seven-day average for new cases is just over 1,000. And just by contrast, back in early December, that number was about 4,000 cases per day. So that is coming down. The testing positivity rate is actually slowly inching up. It's at 6.5%, but again, it was at 14% back in late December. So we are down quite a bit from that. No real issues to report from the winter storm. Quite a wallop there. There was one incident with a rock slide that occurred on the PCH near Big Rock Drive on Saturday evening. It did affect one vehicle and lanes were closed briefly while Caltrans came out and mopped that up. Also wanted to go with the council's concurrence. We'd like to begin scheduling some presentations to highlight some of the great work that's been done by the staff and our environmental sustainability department. We gave a presentation last week highlighting some of their accomplishments over the past year. And the committee recommended that we bring some of that information to council. So with council's indulgence, we'll be scheduling a series of short presentations to highlight some of their accomplishments. Also, I wanted to just note that city staff has kicked off the budget preparation season. So we are moving into that. And then lastly, if I could call for Captain C2 to give a brief report from the Sheriff's Department. And I'm happy to answer any questions after that.
Thanks, Steve.
Hi, everybody. How are you? It's been way too long, but it's so nice to see everybody on Zoom and hopefully I'll be seeing you in person very soon. I just kind of want to give you an update. I'm gonna make sure I have my notes right here next to me. So when I came in in May, I talked about my priorities in not just Malibu, but the entire region. I just kind of wanted to go over those priorities, talk to you about where we're at on them. We've made some headway, but we are not there yet. But I just at least want to provide you with an update. So of course, my first one is emergency preparedness. Obviously, you know, this is near and dear. Well, all of these are near and dear to my heart. But recently, one of my major priorities was actually getting a working EOC. Last time I was here in 2019, I got $30,000 to as a grant and nothing was done. And so now it's almost finished. We are getting updated maps from the fire chief and we got new desks and new monitors that actually work and new computers updated. So we're really excited about that. Also, we're working a lot with Chief Drew Smith. Um, also, we're working a lot with Chief Drew Smith and OEM uh Chief Kevin McCown, who is a local resident as well, so it's a really great combination. Um, prior to um leading up to like fire season. It's literally us three. We literally talk every week. We're doing trainees together. And then right before this big storm season, um, this big storm we had last weekend, we talked about our personnel and, okay, how many people are we going to put out there? Because we know we're going to have mudslides, et cetera, et cetera. So we really coordinate together. Um. I'm really pushing to use technology um as a as a way that I can help with emergency preparedness or anything um with emergency incidents. So. One thing is um drones. I'm really trying to get drones for lost hikers. You know, um arson watch, um, other different things that uh we can use drones thing for. So. Um, I'm really trying to push the technology side of that and working with a county council and the department right now to get that. Um, we uh we took fires idea. They have a fire commander's um field book. It's great. So if a fire commander is working on uh the this region that they're not familiar with this region. They actually can look at this book and it's like bullet points of, hey, this is a large command post. This is small command post jurisdictions, understanding um. Who's who, who to call. And so we made our version, a law enforcement version of that one. Um, let me just, uh, I'm going to move quickly because I know that went very, very long. Um homelessness. Um, I was told that three years ago, we had two hundred RVs in Malibu. Um, I had Sergeant Velik, who you met last week. Um, I had him go up PCH today and I was like, I need a count. Please get me a count. So he went up PCH today in the city and we had seven. So a huge success. Um, I wasn't here when we had two hundred RVs and I can't even imagine. So we're really, um. You know, we're moving forward on that, continuing our outreach to find permanent housing, real solutions and deal with this issue. Um. Um, I know the official homeless count isn't done yet, but I heard that um it it has been reduced from last year. Um, PCH safety. Um, I uh Councilmember Irving, I know that we discussed this in two thousand nineteen when you're on the planning commission. And uh, we're really talking about how can we make PCH safer? Well, in two thousand twenty-one, we had seven pedestrians fatality collisions just in the city of Malibu. And we spent um countless hours really dissecting those of understanding lighting. From uh uh crosswalks, what time of day, what did this look like? Who was the person? Was there alcohol involved? On and on and on, really dissecting these. And then created a plan to ensure that we can reduce that number. So last year in twenty twenty-two. We had three pedestrian fatalities. That is still three too many, but we are going to work hard to or reduce those anymore. And I got to give a special shout out to uh Michelle Shane, who um I have recently just uh become uh friends with. And he produced a movie Twenty One Miles in Malibu. He asked me to look at it. Um, it took me three weeks to get back to him because it was just so heart wrenching. It was just, it was just really hard to look at, and I'm really proud of what the work that he did. It is hard to watch, but it also brings a lot of awareness. So, um, thank you, Michelle Shane. Um, school safety. Um, uh, Councilmember Gresani, Mayor Silverstein, we personally worked on those on this together. I'm excited to say we have um Bill Velik dedicated. Um, Sergeant to our school district as a liaison, has a history of working with schools, has some brilliant ideas, and he's working well with schools. And now you have a dedicated JT member specifically to the Malibu School District. And the most important part is. Zero cost to the schools and zero cost to the city. So uh that one was out of uh my hide, but only because I believe in school safety so much. Um. And I know all of us do. We've had those discussions. Uh, crime and burglaries. Burglars aren't so much in uh Malibu. Um, that we're experiencing on the other side of the hill, but we did create a burglary task force. It is part-time, just because I don't have the personnel to. Staff at full time, but we have made some roads to that and looking at crime trends and how best to address them. Um, we use, we've got um electric mountain bikes to do patrols in the open space area as well as dirt bikes. So you'll see deputies out on those mountain bikes and the dirt bikes. Not only for like arson watch and other things, um outreach to homeless, but also for crime suppression. So again. We're not done. We have a lot, a lot more to do, but we've made uh some impacts. Um, I reviewed a last or two weeks ago, um, uh Councilmember Irene, you had a, um, you brought up a really, really good point. Um, and you asked, and forgive me if I'm phrasing this wrong, but you asked the question. How do we know we are getting our money's worth for the early morning's car? And I said that I was listening to that. I was like, that's a really good question. How do, how do we know that? And I was listening to just the dialogue and it was about, you know. Counting citations, doing this, and I was like. That just isn't it. Um, you know, having spent most of my career in homeland security, I just go back to this analogy and forgive me if it's not, if it doesn't. If it doesn't sit well, but it's the only analogy that I can think of is how do we measure the success of the Department of Homeland Security that we spend billions of dollars on, right? Um, is it because we haven't attacked? But how do you measure something that doesn't happen, right? And so I just kind of want to add a few comments about that, but. Um, I look forward to working with the council because maybe we could kind of find something out. You know, because traffic tickets are in parking citations aren't really a thing, especially if we have two hundred. Uh, if we have a reduction in RVs. The trap, the the citations in RVs. Aren't going to be as much as it was a few years ago, but maybe there's something else that we could look at together. So I I would appreciate your input. But um I just want to go over a couple um, couple notes, um. High Visibility Patrol, I think, is an important part to measure. It causes individuals to reduce speeds. Especially on PCH and speeds are the number one cause of fatalities on PCH. And so just the mere presence of that high visibility patrol does help reduce the. The speeds and preventing the accidents. Um, and then we mentioned the RVs and then just the same thing with um outreach to the homeless communities. You know, we do a lot. Uh, we don't just cite, but we actually try to figure out a plan with them and educate them and say. Hey, you will be towed and really try to work with them, bring in the host team and try to have a permanent solution. That's always our goal is a permanent solution to this. So again, I I didn't come here with solutions, Councilmember Irving, and I apologize. Um, but I look forward to having that communication with you of. How do we measure that? And I wrap, I turned around my brain around it and I really could not think of a fair way to measure it. The only thing I kept thinking of. How do I measure something that maybe doesn't happen? So, um, thank you so much for having me here today, and I look forward to working with each of you.
Thank you for that report. And you know, I I was thinking when I heard the conversation last meeting, too, that um actually more citations is not a measure of success. Less citations is. Less citations, of course, can also come from. Not working as hard, but I I don't, I don't believe that's what's going on. So actually, I think the less that's going on, the better you're doing, not the more that's going on. Steve, you're.
Uh, yes, just Captain C two. Thank you very, very much for your presentation. Uh, I I. I I understand you're working hard to help us do this, and if I can do anything to help, please let me know. And happy birthday. I think you just had a recent birthday and congratulations.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
Mary Ann. You're muted.
I also wanted to compliment you. Um, I love the idea of all the technology and getting all your deputies out um on the bikes and using those types of things. Uh, it's a great use of thinking outside the box and happy birthday and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm, I'll, I'll join the chorus of thanking you because um that was a great report and um it's good to see what's going on and and I too echo the uh Mary Ann's support for. As much use of technology as possible, especially the drones. I think that's a a golden opportunity to to help with things. Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you again, Jennifer, for Captain C two. Um, Steve, is there anything further? No, Mr. Mayor. Okay, great. Uh, so that takes us to City Council Subcommittee Reports, Mayor and Councilmember Meeting Attendance Reports and Inquiries. Uh, who wants to go first tonight? Paul. You're muted, Paul.
Of course I am. Uh, really loved the people who came out tonight. I think that they're correct. We really can. Make the Snack Shack happen. I know that when our son was young and in Little League and Pony League. Uh, the Snack Shack was a big part of the deal and uh he and his friends loved it. And when we were there and. It was much better to not have to leave the place and. It it seems like something we can do, doesn't seem insoluble. And I'm looking forward to that. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say is that I wanted to thank Sheila. Moravati uh. For bringing up the balloon situation to us. And I saw that Laguna just passed one, and I think it's the way the tide is going, and we ought to go with it. Thank you. A yield of four.
You're muted.
I I'm sorry about that. Mary Ann, you're up.
Um, I just, I attended a CPA meeting. I uh attended a school separation meeting. Um, the environmental sustainability meeting, and I wanted to ask all our citizens. Uh, to go to malibu city dot org slash. Enviro events and find out all the different things that are going to be happening. We've got Earth Day coming up. And there's a lot of exciting things um happening in our community, and I hope that we get to see our community out there. And I also wanted to thank all the speakers um with regards to the Snack Shack. Um, I think it's something, you know, uh, I know we can find a solution to this and it'll be great for our community. So I look forward to working with the other. Councilmembers, the mayor and the mayor pro tem on this. And um also, you know, the balloon, I know they started, a previous councils had started it a few years ago. And um, you know, I think it's something that we should look into, pick up and see uh what we can find solutions in our community for. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Doug?
Okay, I'm going to be just a little bit longer. I got a couple more things to go over um and the others. Uh, A and F, my last two weeks, A and F Committee. Uh, attended the Malibu Association Realtors Director's Lunch. A council of government meeting. Um, I was an alternate. And today I was on a Verizon Resiliency Review. And I would encourage the other council members that uh if invited to take advantage of that. It's good to see what they have for urgency backup. Um, first of all, I think we need to have a a big sigh of relief. We got through this major storm and our thanks needs to go to Public Works. Public Safety, the utility providers and our fire and sheriff. The fact that almost nothing happened is a combination of good preparation and good luck, and we ought to ought to take our hats off and thank the people that made that happen. Um, this uh Snack Shack. Uh, by the fact that I haven't been able to talk, I tried to talk to. Two other council members. And apparently I hit the two that have already um. Uh, Brown Act buddies on that. But I will say this. This is something that is resonating in the community. We've got to come up with a solution. And here, here's possible roadmap for that. The local coastal plan amendment is going to take a long time. We know that. But some of these parents have gotten together and found. Perhaps a loophole. And that is. They called it a tiny house uh concession stand. And what it amounts to is it's a uh on wheels. Not permanently and a fixed. A stand that could be put in place to the existing snack shack, and we can have it in a matter of a few months at less than a hundred thousand dollars. Now. You say to yourself, well, it's not forever. Well, when its time is up and we've got a permanent snack shack, we can sell it. So I would encourage the city manager and I'd like to have him uh look into this if if we've got a consensus. Figure out what we can do in the short term. Whether it's a concession stand, it's on wheels or something else. And get something here for the kids this summer. They're absolutely right. It's a shame not to have a snack shack for the kids. Let's go over the solution and also get the LCP going. And I don't know if we need to have a motion to do that or what, but we need to get that moving now. And I know that there's two other uh council members that are looking at this item as well. So Brown Act uh precludes us from getting this uh off to a faster start, but let's get it solved quickly. Uh, next thing I want to talk about. Uh. East Malibu has had a series of nuisances over there of late and last few years. That we passed a nuisance ordinance for. And I think it would be a good idea if we could get a response or review back from uh staff. As to how well the ordinance that was passed in July of twenty twenty-one is working in this situation. If it's not solving our nuisance issues, then we need to adjust it, and if it is, then we ought to know about it. So I'd like to ask the city manager to bring that back to us with just a, just a review. We're not, I'm not asking for war and peace here. Just tell us if it's working and East Malibu is a perfect example of it. They've had fires up there and some other issues and it's. It's, it's really an opportunity to see if our nuisance ordinance works. Uh, next thing I want to talk about. Is the A and F meeting and. We had a K, in case they don't get through all the agenda tonight, uh specifically uh six A and the second quarter financial results. I want to mention something that uh I feel is very important. This uh report as of December thirty-first shows that we've got ninety-one million dollars. In cash. A good chunk of that is in our reserves. Now, you go back a year ago and corporate cash management and cash management in general for people didn't mean much because interest rates were low. You get ten basis points, tenth of one percent, twenty, twenty basis points, a fifth of one percent, and you were happy to get that at your bank. Things have changed. All corporations, all major people holding uh cash positions have changed and turned back on their cash management business. November thirtieth, uh even before I was on the city council, I talked to the A and F Committee about this. And we've been working on it since then. I want to thank the city staff, especially Joe Tony, Steve McClary, and our treasurer, Ruthie Quinto. The reason why this is important. Today, we can invest in one hundred and eighty-day T bills. Credit risk-free, mark-to-market risk-free. And we can be getting five percent. That's four and a half million dollars a year in income that a year ago we didn't have. That's over ten thousand dollars a day. So. And I see Steve looking at me on the um uh camera. He and I have had this conversation, all of us have. We need to get this started and get it going fast. Uh, I've requested uh Ruthie Quinto and city staff to give the city council a monthly report. Just like in the same format that we have the report in today's uh A and F package. To the city council each month, showing what we're invested in and what our returns are. We have an excellent investment policy for the city. It was adopted in, I believe, twenty twenty-one. If I was a consultant, I would try and make a copy of that. It is perfect for us. It has benchmarks in it. It has process in it and has uh an excellent track record if we will apply. So let's get started on it. Let's get the extra money in. And when you think about it, that snack shack. Is probably worth about ten days worth of interest income off this program when we get it going full blast. So let's get the snack shack going. Let's get the money coming in. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Trevor, did, did you have some kind of um warning or something that you wanted to share before we continue?
Not a warning. I just wanted to respond to uh Councilmember Stewart uh about the. The action for the Snack Shack. If it's the council's pleasure, I would recommend uh directing staff to add an item to a future agenda. Um, with an option to initiate an LCP amendment and present other options to the the council for um moving the snack shack forward.
Okay, let, let, let's. Complete our reports first because other options might occur and then we can um see if we have a consensus on that and or other things. Thank you, Trevor. Steve, you're up.
Uh, yes, a couple, real quick, Kelsey, you did a heck of a job managing all those early speakers. Well, thank you very much. You're really good at that stuff. Uh, I believe I I agree with the person recommending the balloon. You know, stopping that stuff from going on. I think that's a good thing for our environment. Uh, I attended the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Committee meeting. I attended the Environmental Sustainability Meeting. Uh, Cliffside Drive, I've had a lot of calls over the last couple of weeks about traffic taking place over at the Headlands. At Cliffside Drive, I've spoken to the Public Safety Commission. I've spoken to Susan Duenus. They've got that on their agenda, so hopefully we'll get some answers and best ways to deal with that. Uh, I got a email this week from Tim Para. Who was the ranger from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. Uh, who gave us his email address and his phone number and wanted us to put that forward so people have questions or concerns. With anything going on with the the MRCA, they've got somebody to call. So I spoke to Steve McClary. We're going to try and put that on our website someplace. So if you've got an issue, you'll have somebody that can call and hopefully take care of that for you. And then finally, if you've been reading the Malibu Times over the last couple of weeks, you've seen a whole bunch of e- e- or letters coming in. Recommending we keep the farmer's market over at Legacy Park. Uh, we're not going to do that tonight, but I think there's an issue. Uh, we're not gonna do that tonight, but I think there's some issues going on with the county in terms of what they're trying to do uh, back on the, the parking lot. So I, I'd like to see if there's not some way that we can keep that. Farmer's Market where it is in Legacy Park. I think the residents like it, and I think it's a good thing for the city. So. Uh, with that, Mayor, I'll take it back to you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, I'm, I'm, first of all, I'm gonna um, address the snack shack comments last, not because they're least, but because they're the most extensive. And I think require the, the, the greatest attention and, and commentary. But um, in general, I want to thank all the public speakers. Um, as well as a few folks who submitted written comments, which we all read. Um, and I echo Doug's um, compliments to the city for dealing with the uh, winter storm. I mean, it. Could have been horrendous and turned out. We didn't have any major issues here. It was, it's, it was well handled. Um, I also attended the A and F Subcommittee meeting. I participated on calls with Steve, um, both Steves with the Cal Strack representatives. Um, a few nights ago, I attended a um. An event at Pepperdine um, for the Women Life Freedom Movement um, that honors the um, Iranian efforts to um. Get some civil rights and, you know, that's an international issue, not just Iran. It's everywhere, including here. Um. I want to address the um, comments that the residents have made, and again, I'll, I'll keep the snack shack last. Um, first of all, on the balloon ban, I, I, I think that's something worth bringing. As an item so that we can have a discussion as to whether we want to do something. I mean, you know, Scott Dittick made some good points, but. They're good points in all directions. It seems though it's something that we ought to at least take a ser, give serious consideration to. And, and I would support adopting something. So. Um, I'm hoping when I, when I'm done speaking, perhaps we could see if we have a consensus on bringing an item back. Um, to give the staff direction on what, if anything, to do with that issue. Um. Going through my notes, almost all of them are about the snack shack. Um. I, I wouldn't make one comment that came out of one of the comments. Melissa Solano said, um, we're one of the wealthiest zip codes in the country, and you know, wh, why shouldn't we be able to get this done? Um. I just, I, I've said this before, and I hope everybody, people understand it. And this is not. It's an excuse for anything that's happening because I support doing something, but we're not one of the wealth, I mean. The wealth in this city is in the residents who are very wealthy. They pay a lot of money to the federal government and federal income tax. They pay a lot of money to the state and state income tax. And we pay a lot of property tax, but the, the county takes ninety three percent of our property tax. It's not all used by the county. It's used by the state as well. We have a whopping seven percent of our property taxes and sales taxes. So even though one would think we'd be one of the wealthiest zip codes in the country. We're actually a, a relatively modest city with a very wealthy population. And I think that's what results in our residents having a lot of frustration over things the city doesn't and can't do. Um, and. Anyone with ideas for what we can do further to, to get more money to, so the city can be wealthy and do what, everything that the residents are entitled, deserve. Um, all ears. We, we increased that, the sales, not technically sales tax, but we, we increased the tax that's going to bring in three million dollars a year, hopefully ma, mostly at the expense of visitors. Um, and Doug has a great idea for bringing in some millions of dollars in interest. That would be phenomenal. Uh, but a, again, I just want to. Make sure everyone is aware of that. We're, we're not as wealthy a city as a lot of people think we are. Um. Norm Haney um, asked that the Sea View project be brought forth. Post haste, I, I completely agree. It should be, especially if we have a contractual commitment to do so. So I'm hoping Steve McClary will get that on the um. Agenda sometime in March, as Norm said, and I think we were working towards that in any event. So um, hopefully that will happen. Uh, Bill Sampson made a note about last meeting. Um, two representatives of MRCA said they were gonna be here every week giving a report about various things. They weren't here tonight, so. That was not much of a long-lived commitment. Hopefully that'll come back because I know people are interested to hear what they're doing. Um, okay, so the snack shack, I. I think we are all in agreement. Something needs to be done. I don't understand why it actually requires an LCP amendment. I would, at a minimum, I would encourage the staff and. I don't know whether this requires a consensus or not, but I, I'd um, request that the staff be as creative as and inventive as they are when they have a project. For someone that they want to be approved. And come up with all those great ideas that they always give to us at hearings about why this can be done, not why this can't be done. Uh, without an LCP amendment. We should probably concurrently work on an LCP amendment. Um. As belt and suspenders for whatever we come up with creatively, but there's no reason why we can't be creative and find some kind of way. To do this when it seems to be such an important thing for the community. Um, the other thing I want to say about that is, and it, tonight was a great example of great community activism. Um, Alicia Peak, I, I commend you for having organized that. I think you're the, the, the person that did that. Um, when I was not on city council and people would ask me, how do you get something done? I'd always say, organize a whole bunch of people, show up at city council and everyone speak, make them listen. Uh, you know, it, it, it took a lot of our time, but you're, the residents are entitled to do that, and that's the way that they let us know what the residents want. So. Thank you for all doing that. You were all heard. And I'm hoping we will be able to do something, not in the long run, but in the immediate future as well as in the long run. So Trevor had suggested we, we see if we have a consensus to have it, to agendize perhaps for the next meeting. Certainly no later than the one after that, which will be the first meeting we're live. Um, a discussion of um, a potential LCP amendment, and I would add as well, what can be done in the immediate future as opposed to the long term. So. We have a consensus on that, Mary Ann. You're muted.
Sorry, I've got a screen that pops in every time I try to unmute. Um, I was just gonna say that we do have item six A with the work plan on it. Is that a possibility that we can modify the work plan and get that done tonight instead of waiting for a future meeting?
We can talk about that with six A, but work plan's a long-term thing that doesn't usually result in. Results in the next couple of weeks or months.
We, we do have a, a specific item with regards to maintenance and uh, improvements and things at Bluffs Park. Uh, as part of the Community Service Parks and Rec. Item, so. Um. If we're gonna try and be creative, it, it would seem that that would be a logical place to try and um. Add that into.
Trevor?
You can add it to the work plan, but I, I would recommend that you agendize an item to come forward. I think it'd be hard for staff to turn a report around. We, we publish, you know, on this Thursday for the, the next meeting. Um, but to have staff bring it back as soon as possible, if, if that's the, the, what you want to do, and if you are, want it brought, brought back that fast, then I would adjust the work plan because. Um, staff will be working on, and you should prioritize where you want that when we get to item six A. Um, in terms of how you want them prioritized at time, but I, I would recommend agendizing it to, to uh, bring back an option for an LCP amendment and as I, as you recommended. Other options, um, you know. Available to the city council to. Uh, address the specs, the snack shack.
So do we have, do we have a consensus to ask that that be agendized for the first? Meeting that it can be practically done, which I'm hoping will be no later than the second meeting in March?
I would second that. I, I thirded.
Doug?
Uh, uh, if, if we do bring it in, if we want to bring it back, let's ask the staff to do two things. Give us a quick near-term solution and also a longer-term solution, two, two parts to the same question.
Yeah, as many options as possible for the near term.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Mary Ann, you support it?
Yes.
I, I'd also asked if we could um, have consensus on agendizing a discussion of whether we want to proceed with some kind of a balloon ban of some nature. Do we have a consensus to get that on the agenda at some point? That doesn't have to be in the next meeting or two, but to get that on the uh, list.
I would second that also.
Doug?
My, my experience as a sailor, you find those Mylar balloons all over the ocean between here and Catalina. It's an absolute uh, mess out there, and I'm fully in favor of it. I would recommend perhaps uh. Believe it was Sheila Mor, Morvadi. If she can give us a sample ordinance to look at as well, that would be helpful.
Mary Ann?
Um, Trevor, if you could answer, um, it's my recollection that in twenty eighteen. They had processed um, and they were going for second reading of an ordinance. Um. And it was late. Is that just something that we can? Revisit, um, or is it something that we need to start fresh with? I think second reading was supposed to be in October of twenty eighteen, right before the fire.
I remember there was, um, we had something that was going forward. Um, like. If you, you agendize an item, we're back a report, we can um, dig up the history there of where we're at. Uh, if there is an order that had a first reading, I would recommend that we just. Give a first and second reading um, from this council, given the gap in distance. Uh, in time from when that went through.
Paul? Just two things, uh, Laguna just passed one. And uh, I think we're all in favor of it uh, being agendized as. As soon as practical.
Yeah.
And, and thank you, Mary Ann, for the catch on, on when it was up before.
Thank you, Paul. And, and the last thing is, I, I had this on my notes and I neglected to get to it. Uh, there's, there's another item I'd like to see agendized for a future meeting. And this relates to, but it, it, actually, it, it is raised by the Sea View Project, but it doesn't relate to the Sea View Project itself. But it's that Coastal made the point when that was presented that um, the in lieu fee. That is, that is available in, in place of um, low cost overnight accommodations. It is woefully inadequate. It was adopted many, many years ago, maybe it's twenty years ago, and it's out of tune. Um, we, our fee is something in the neighborhood of ten thousand dollars for every fifteen rooms that you have that are not low cost. Um, that you have to pay ten thousand dollars to fund low-cost accommodations somewhere. And Coastal says the, the real price is more like a hundred thousand dollars. So I, I'd like to get agenda, that's one item, and these are all related. The other is. Um. I, I, I think we should actually give some thought to whether the LIP provision that allows a developer. To unilaterally determine that they choose not to provide low-cost accommodations and instead to pay money. So that others can be developed elsewhere, not be the developer's option, but be the city's option to allow that or not allow that. The way it works right now is we're bound to the developer's option. If they don't want any low-cost rooms, they don't have to have them. I, I think that the LIP should be that they have to have low-cost rooms unless we give them a pass. For an appropriate um, subsidy. And then lastly, I, I, I think we need to be exploring what we can be doing to um, support. The, the creation of low-cost overnight accommodations, other than the kind that we're opposed to. Like the camping in the bluffs, but we, we need to be finding ways as a city to create those opportunities, which I think will. Serve us well with Coastal. So I, I want, I would like to get agendized a, a discussion of, these are all very related items. Um, it might make sense to do that sometime after the Sea View Hotel project is presented because there'll be some more discussion. Of this, of this issue in connection with Sea View. Um, is there an appetite for that?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind doing. I think it's gonna be a long, we may want to do that to come in some kind of a special meeting because that, that's a lot of stuff to. Absorb in one session, so just.
Well, I wonder, subject to um, Trevor saying something else, I wonder if we could get a consensus on asking Zeracis to look at that.
Yeah.
Trevor?
Yeah, that, that's, that's definitely something you can send it to Zeracis. I, I was just going to uh, to, to uh. Say two things. One is that Coastal Commission has actually um, requested that we update that, that fee. So it should, it could be something that. Um, it might not be difficult to get through. Um, and some of the other options that you, other provisions you talked about that are related to that section of the LIP. Um, that would fit into a similar discussion. Um. But those things, Zeracis is a great way to start it. I would just recommend also that you put that in. Prioritize that when you get to the, we, we get here later in the meeting so that we can allocate staff resources to, you know, um. Put them on which ones you think are the, the highest priorities and include this when you get there.
Okay. Doug?
I think you covered it. I, I think Zeracis is a good place to put that, and I think those are good topics to address there. I think we're also gonna have to address in the future, uh, low-income housing, uh, to make sure we don't have a Santa Monica problem. Where they have the builder's option slammed down their throat. So uh, I don't know if we want to mix those two together, probably not, but I do think we need to take care of the um, um. Low-cost accommodations first.
Okay, so um, I guess we can address this more in more detail when we do item six added and appreciate that overlap. So that ends um, council member comments and takes us to the consent calendar. I know we've been going for a long time, but let's get through the consent calendar and then we'll take a break before the appeal. Um, have any items been pulled by the public from the consent calendar?
Yes, items three B four and three B seven. I'm noticing Pamela is raising her hand. She did sign up to speak on three B seven.
Okay, well, we're not quite there yet. Unless Pamela, unless Pamela wants to pull another item. Uh, let's, let's continue whether to see if any council members want to pull one, but you want to, let's ask Pamela if she's raising her hand to pull an item or raising her hand to speak when the item is called.
Yeah, I'm pulling, I'd like to uh, pull three B four. I apologize, not three B seven.
I'm sorry, Pamela, that is actually the item you had signed up for. I, I got the two speakers confused with the two items.
Okay, so we have three B four and three B seven pulled. Does any member of the council wish to pull an item? Doug?
Yeah, uh, we need to uh, approve a minute, so I think Mary Ann and I both need to abstain in three B three. And I'd like to pull three B six uh, for a quick discussion.
Okay. Um, does any other council member wish to pull any other item? Mary Ann, can you confirm that you're abstaining from three B three as well?
Uh, well, that's what I was wondering. Um, do I need to? It's only the closed session that I did not. Review?
That's why I was raising my hand. I remember your question from before. No, you can vote on that item if you did review the, 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 either the tape or the transcript of uh, what happened at the earlier meeting. The closed session, there are no minutes from that, so you'd be able to vote on the minutes if you watched the meeting.
I watched the meeting both at the time and uh, and reviewed afterwards.
Okay, so, so you need not abstain. Are you pulling the item or? We're just, we're okay with that. Okay. Um. Seeing no further hands. Um, can I get a motion to approve the consent calendar excluding three B four, three B six, three B seven, and noting Doug's abstention to three B three?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Protem Yuri?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart, I'm sorry, Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to three B four, um, which I understand was pulled by Pamela Ulik. Um, Pamela, would you like a report before you extend your comments, or do you want to just make your comments?
Uh, sure, you can do a report.
Okay, we have a report, please?
Mayor Silverstein, this is the um, item to reaffirm the re, the resolution with the findings for AB three sixty one to allow the council to still meet under that format. Um, it looks like the city attorney may have had to step away, but we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay.
I'm sitting here.
Pamela, you have any, you have comments to make?
Yeah, I would, uh, Mayor and mem, honorable members of the city council and the forty-one or so faceless. Malibu City mem, uh, participants and members of our community. Uh, in about three and a half hours, as you know, the governor Newsom, there will no longer be a state of the emergency. And I don't understand how in good faith tonight. You can declare that there are, is evidence that there is still a state of the emergency, so you will not have an in-person meeting. I know it's small. I know maybe in the couple more weeks in the end of March, but in my opinion, in good faith, you need to start meeting now, as in the next meeting in March. I think it's not fair for the community to remain faceless. I think it is a burden on you and, and granted, God love you because I served for eight years and it takes a lot of time away from your family. On those Monday nights to come down to City Hall. But it is mandatory, if you took this job, it's your duty to show up and to be there in person. And for those of you who have immunity issues, I know there may be some issues, we will wear masks. But I think it's. Unconscionable tonight. For any of you to vote that this state of emergency exists when you know. The governor issued his report on October seventeenth. Stating on February twenty eighth, there will no longer be a state of emergency. I cannot understand how you in any event could, could. Could. Declare one right now. And so I think it's in bad faith if you do so. It's a disappointment to the community. We have waited. As you know, almost three years. There was one meeting which I attended. As you know, almost three years. There was one meeting which I attended, but when you guys approved the summer tow lot. And after that, nobody's shown up at City Hall. I'm really disappointed. Um I hope tonight you're not gonna extend it. I know it's just maybe one more week, but it's not right. So I would request that you do not find the state of emergency. Almost no other city in the state of California has been finding the state of emergency that you guys are gonna vote on tonight. So I respectfully request that you start meeting the first in person, the first meeting in March. And so all the city uh all the members will sh- show up and the council members and the community in person. Um thank you for your time. Thank you for your service. I know it is a lot of work. There are a lot of people that do appreciate the time and service that you're putting in, and it's important that we connect again in person. So I appreciate it. And I look forward to seeing you hopefully sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela. Is there any other public comment?
No, we don't have any other speaker signups or any raised hands from the public.
Okay, so that closes public comment, Paul. Did you want to comment?
I just wanted to take a second to ask Pamela to review the the tape of the last meeting in which we discussed at length how early we could do this and we are have some other technology on order. And we're gonna be doing some test runs and it's already scheduled for us to be back in face to face the second meeting in March. And believe me, we've been trying to do it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Uh what I'll say is um we're not declaring any state of emergency or even relying upon any declared state of emergency. Uh there's a there's a statement in the um resolution which identifies the state of emergency that was declared, which as Pamela says correctly will will expire. But what's going on is AB three sixty one allows hybrid meetings um to occur so long as either state or local officials have imposed or recommended measures to promote social distancing, which plainly is still the case. Um or the legislative body determines by majority vote that meeting in person would present imminent risks to the health and safety of attendees. So leave the second one out. There's 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 just zero question that it because uh there's been a question about our acting in good faith. There's zero question that local official, state or local officials haven't have recommended measures to promote social distancing. That that has not been withdrawn. So we can certainly in good faith adopt this resolution. Um as Paul said, we also have determined that we're going to go back to face to face meetings or in person meetings beginning the second week of March. So I don't understand the 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 urgency comments about how we have to do it immediately. Um I had advocated that we require the city council members to attend physically. But we were told by our city attorney that if we're going to use AB three sixty one for sub for commissions and subcommittees, which the city council decided they wish to continue to do. We could not also separately require city council members to attend. So there's a lot of legal issues here. Um we're doing the best we can. Uh we are gonna start meeting live in three weeks or I'm sorry, in four weeks. I intend to be at the meeting unless I'm not physically capable of being there, and I believe the other four city council members do as well. So um unless there's any other comments, I'll ask for a roll call. Well, I'll ask if I have a motion to approve three before.
I'll make a motion to approve three before.
I'll second.
We have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protim Yuri?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. That takes us to three B six, and I think Doug pulled that. Doug, would you like a report?
No, I don't need a report. Uh just more of a clarification from staff. Uh when you read this, and I think the the purpose of the um classification compensation compensation study is is ideal. I think this is the right firm for it. The only question I had is what is it gonna take? Is it thirty four weeks to get this done? Um those of us that have been in the corporate uh HR activities. You know, classifications are almost um boilerplate. When you get big organizations, and I would think from city to city, they're pretty consistent. The consultant should have pretty well consistent uh templates to use. And as far as the uh uh compensation study, similarly, uh if they've got a big database, they should be able to pull this up or have the surveys. So if they take thirty four weeks, this isn't gonna be finished almost at the end of the year. Um they're not charging us for all that time. It's it's not a huge amount of money in greater scheme of things. So I'm just kind of questioning why it's gonna take so long, because if I was working for the city, I'd like to see this get done. So that's my that's my query. Why thirty four weeks?
Okay, be- before we get an answer on that, I should have asked Kelsey to confirm that we have no public speakers. I see no hands and I know nobody signed up, but is that accurate?
Correct. We still don't have any speaker signups for this item.
Okay, Doug, would you like somebody specific to respond to your question?
Um I don't know. Is I I know Joe Tony and uh Steve McCleary. There's Joe. Uh maybe he's got the answer. I gave him a little bit of a heads up on this, as I'm prone to do. So Joe, uh I set you up. Tell me what you know.
Yeah, honorable Mayor Silverstein and and Councilmember Stewart. Um so we haven't done a study in nearly twenty years. Um so we want to make sure it's as comprehensive and in depth as possible and and that we do get it right the first time. Um I'd say a study like this is about that long. You know, maybe some can do it in about six months, and we might even be able to work with um Coffin Associates like uh or Gallagher um that is a parent company uh to shorten it a little bit. A lot of it depends on how much we can gather that information internally, uh providing all the job descriptions, job classifications. Um trying to look at the work staffs doing, seeing what jobs need may need title changes, those sorts of things. So it's a two part study, really. We have to look at all of our job specs or classifications, make sure that those are in line uh with the market, and then look at what those comparables are to other agencies. And not all of our job positions will uh increase in in cost. We may actually be very competitive in some of our positions. Uh but we want to make sure that uh we are being very competitive and that we're at uh a a top tier range, since obviously it's very difficult to attract people. Um and we want to make sure uh we're we're in that uh that area. So we need to look at as many agencies that uh we believe are comparable as possible. Um and we'll we'll work with the consultant to do that. And I will mention that we also have a representative from uh COFF available, Gayor Kramer, in case you have any questions specifically for for the firm.
Doug, does that satisfy your inquiry, or did you want more information?
Well, it's it's uh may it might be a good idea to hear from the uh company itself, but I see we've got three hands raised, so maybe we go down the line and see if anybody else has any questions and uh pose the question to the supplier, to the vendor.
All right, well, we can move on, or you can get your questions answered. It's up to you.
Well, let's uh see what everybody else has got. Maybe we can bind them all together and let him answer us.
Okay, Mary Ann?
Yeah, um I agree with Doug. I would like to see this completed in a more timely manner. Um I understand the scope that we're going for, but we do we have a lot of things that we're we're trying to take care of, and I think compensation for our staff is is gonna be one of the things that we're gonna um be able to use to in get more people to come to work here. Um I do have a couple of questions with regards to the collection of information and who's gonna be on the the study project team. Um one of the things was the uh the PDQ, and I'm sorry, I lost the place where it described what that was, but it was basically the gathering of the data from the staff as to what they do as part of their job function and how it relates to their job title. I'm concerned about the one statement that says employees complete the questionnaire and then send it to their supervisor for review, comment, and signature. Um I'm a little confused why the employees are completing a questionnaire and then their supervisor is signing off on it. Um while I can see that uh we do want to have correlation that the employees are not exaggerating or or making false claims about exactly what they do. I think you you run the possibility of not getting full disclosure and um not complete transparency with regards to that. And then with regards to making up the study project team, um I would like to see a better cross section of employees from the exempt and non-exempt, uh not just uh HR and management positions, but also some of just rank and file uh people that we've got on staff so that we get um a complete um picture of what it is like to work for the city of Malibu. And then also um finding corresponding cities. You know, I I appreciate Doug's comment that we you know, have many things that correspond to other communities, but our community is very unique. Um obviously, I have a unique perspective on this, and uh we do a lot of things here that other comparably sized communities don't do. And the amount of technical work that's required because of the environmental issues, because of the um the concerns by residents and um the amount of um oversight by outside agencies uh definitely elevates the amount of uh scrutiny that staff is subjected to. So I just want to make sure that we're not just looking at like minded cities or coastal cities and that we're getting people that are doing technical work. So I know that was a lot out there, but uh thank you.
Well, Mary Ann, when after we get other comments, if you have some proposed amendment to the uh approved to the to the motion uh to approve this, if there is one, um by all means, please add those things, okay? Steve, you're.
Uh yes, I have absolutely no problem in a process enables us to true up our salaries in terms of what other cities are paying, so I don't have a problem with that at all. I do have a question, though. When I when I talk to um Miriam Woodward a while back, I I asked her like when, you know, when they do exit interviews, what is the number one reason why people leave? Joe, what do you what have you heard that answer is?
You know, Mayor Mayor Protim Yuri, that's a confidential discussion with employees. I'd I'd be hesitant to share some of those comments here in exit interviews. Uh that's really a uh management and HR personnel.
Well, I'm not asking for for individual information, individual people. I'm just wanting a general rule. When they why why are they leaving? Are they leaving because of money? Or are they leaving because of something else?
You know, I haven't heard money as the number one issue in in our in our interviews. I think a lot of it's more workload and the expectations uh from the organization.
And I agree with you. That's what I heard when everybody I've talked to and the information I've gotten. So the my my question is, you know, we're we're doing this salary study, and I'm wondering when I get to the end of this, am I really gonna have a solution that helps me deal with recruitment and retention, or have I just done some work that's gonna be benefit for the city, but I really haven't solved the problem? And let me go back and just talk about, I mean, I've done a lot of reading over the last couple of months about corporations that are trying to bring residents uh employees back to work, right? Uh and what I what I've seen is, and it's not only an issue of, well, we go back. My my recollection was when I talked to some of the the HR people, it was it was sort of it it wasn't money, it was life issues, how I work, you know, having to come into the city, how far away it is. I'd rather be doing something else. So and that's some of the same stuff I'm hearing some of these corporations try to hire people. So I sat back and said, what are what are these corporations doing that is helping them bring people in? And let me give you some ideas. If I go to, if a Pepperdine student goes to Marmalade and has dinner, they get they get a discount. Do the city employees get discounts? You know?
Not that I'm aware of. All there is a potential proposal out in the horizon that we're looking at um for trying to find some employee discounts like that.
Right. I mean, I got two colleges here in Malibu, right? I got Santa Monica and I've you know, one of the things I've learned in my prior experience was that if I if I can get employees and give them the ability to get a better education to improve their status and makes them nothing more valuable to the city, but so I mean, we should be thinking about something maybe in terms of paying for some college courses for people. My whole point is, I don't know if this study, the way it's designed right now, is gonna help us solve the issue. And I'm just suggesting, I don't know if these people that we were hiring can help us do that. But I'd like to see somebody thinking about solutions other than just money that may help us retain some more of these people and keep them here and maybe give them some some life issues that make them make it more. We're in a unique city. We should take care of some of the unique stuff we have and see if we can't use that to double to attract people. So that's the end. That's all I got there.
Thank you, Steve. Paul?
Uh quickly, uh there is a discount chip uh program uh available, employee discount program available through the Chamber of Commerce. And I'm surprised they haven't already approached the city, so I will contact them and and get, see if we can't get everybody enrolled in that. Uh the other thing I wanted to say is that my conversations the commute distance is is a problem for the city of Malibu. We are not uh we tend to have to hire people from the other side of the hill or up the coast or things like that. People have significant uh commutes. And uh starting last May, we saw that price of gas double. And so uh you not only have people spending an hour in their car to get to us, but it's costing them twice as much to do it. And when we're comparing our our wages to other places, I think it would be valuable to uh consider where they're able to attract their employees from much closer, probably. We have to have a differential in there to pay people to sit in their cars on the way here. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. My my comments are that um first of all, I I agree with Mary Ann that it doesn't make sense for uh employees to have to have their supervisor sign off on their answers to a questionnaire. Um the answers could be provided to the supervisors down the line without attributing any names, just so that there could be a reality check as to whether they agree or disagree with the comments, but um employees shouldn't have to um have their superiors agree with them when they're answering a questionnaire that is helping the city make decisions. Um in the same vein, um in my experience in um the private sector, when um compensation analyses are being done um outside directors on the boards of directors of those companies participate in the process because they don't have any skin and they they're not receiving any of the salary. They don't they don't benefit from increases or whatever the results of the uh study are. So I actually think it would make sense to have one or two city council members involved in the process. Um at least from time to time, like Steve had suggested with the other um consultants that are working for the city, but actually really meeting from time to time. Um I've been asking about when we when we lose employees over the past two years, what the reasons are as well, and um I also haven't heard that it was it was salary. What I've heard predominantly was taking jobs closer to home, taking getting promotions. Um and you know, we we can't, we can't solve closer to home. We, I don't know that we can solve promotions because we have people already in the higher level positions um who have to be, because the a lot, some people are leaving to to fill positions that are already filled in Malibu and and can't be filled by somebody else. So I don't know how you deal with those issues. Those are the kinds of issues you have everywhere in in the world. I mean, I think of sports teams, you know, as well. Um as far as dollars, though, you know, I I was the hiring partner for a large law firm for many years, one of the hiring partners, not the hiring partner. But what I found, and I think this is pretty common across all industries. Um most people are not gonna make their decision in employment decisions based exclusively on pay, but pay is an important factor. A sufficiently high pay overcomes other problems, and a great place to work overcomes a non-material difference in pay, but it doesn't typically inspire people to take a job um just because it seems like a good place to work when they're not being paid in accordance with scale for other places. So it's a multifaceted issue. It's not limited to dollars. And then the last thing I'll I'll say is, I I believe this is something that Doug and I discussed with um at the at the ANF committee, because I'm having a recollection of that. Um I think we need to understand more than whether we're paying the right amounts. I think we need to understand whether we've got the proper sized staff, full stop, because um as I I made the con, I think I remember making this comment during the ANF meeting. Um if you had one person who's servicing three or four other people um needs, you know, like an assistant. Um you'd expect them to get higher pay than than a number of people who work for only one other person, because it's a harder job. Um I think it's despite the fact that we're told all the time, and I believe it, that our staff is overworked. We are substantially more, we have a substantially larger staff for the size of our city than many other cities do. We have a larger staff than that than some larger than a lot of larger cities. So there's a disconnect there. I know that we have special challenges in Malibu, but there's a disconnect that we have to have so many members of staff to deal with a city this size, when there are cities larger than us that are working with staffs half the size, literally half the size, maybe smaller. So it this is a multifaceted issue. Salary is just one small piece of it. I guess we gotta learn the salary piece of it, which is all that's before us right now. But we have a lot more to understand before we're gonna be able to fix anything if if some. But we have a lot more to understand before we're going to be able to fix anything if, if something is in fact broken. Um, Joe, I see your hands up, but I'd like to, I'd like to, um, go to Paul and Mary Ann unless somebody has a question for you. Um, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna skip you for now if that's, if you don't mind. Paul?
I reject the notion that we have too many employees. I reject the notion that, that because some other community, which is differently, uh, situated and has residents who demand a different level of service than people in Malibu want. Uh, we're here to accommodate the residents of Malibu and the needs of Malibu. And I don't think that we, uh, I don't see any people who seem to be lazing around and not doing much at City Hall. Let's put it that way. So I, I would be interested to learn where it is that, that has half the number of people we have. And I think you'd find that their standard of living for the community is expecting is substantially lower as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Mary Ann?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to concur on that same level. Um, I think also we need to look at those communities that we're being compared to. What are they contracting out for? I know during the fire, a lot of people were raising the issue that Westlake had so few staff. Well, they contract 90% of their services out with the county of Los Angeles, so they don't need a big staff. Um, and you know, if, if you were to query any one of our employees in a, um, a anonymous manner, they would all say that they are working the equivalent of two or three jobs. Uh, part of that is because of the, the short staff that we have right now, that they're all wearing multiple hats. Um, but a lot of that is even when we were fully staffed, it is still an incredibly labor intensive job here. And there are a lot of regulations and a lot of requirements that we have to satisfy both locally, the county level, the state and the federal level. And again, the customer service that we expect, um, as residents to receive from our, um, staff members. So I, I hope that the, the class and comp will keep that into mind. And I look forward to coming, as you were saying, the work-life balance. Some of the things, what can we offer besides money to make this a, an attractive place to, for people to work in and stay at? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mary Ann. Um, I, let's, let's see what Joe has to say and then we'll see if we get a motion. And if Mary Ann has any qualifications to the motion she'd like to add, we can talk about them. Joe, Joe, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yeah, uh, Mayor Silverstein, I wanted to respond real quick. Councilmember Gersondi, uh, we have been contacted by the chamber. Um, and we are looking at that program. I actually have some questions, uh, with our city attorney, just to see what we can do and with them and how to go about that and probably bring something back uh, to council for an employee, uh, discount incentive. And, and to the larger points or comments or questions. Uh, yes, the compensation is really only one facet of employee retention and attraction. You know, hopefully it makes us competitive in the open marketplace to get the right candidates to apply, but then the rest of our organization of work-life balance and positive culture, all those things are really what keep employees. Um, and that's what every study shows. Um, and then I just wanted to comment, if you wanted any questions specifically of, of the vendor to remind you that he's available to comment and answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Doug, did you want to make a motion?
Um, let's do this. Let's, uh, now we've had the, uh, vendor, I guess that's Mr. Kramer. Uh, he's heard all of our comments. Let's see what he can input into it. Uh, I'm sure we're going to pass a motion on this, but I'd like to hear his input, maybe his suggestions on this before we do that.
All right. Mr. Kramer, you want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Honorable Mayor, um, uh, council members. Uh, good evening. Kier Kramer here, managing director with Coffin Associates slash Gallagher. It doesn't look like I can, uh, start my video here, but I hope you can hear me okay.
We hear you fine and we're sorry that for some reason we have a rule that you can't have the video. So.
No, no worries at all. Um, uh, obviously a lot of good discussion items. I guess what I could address is the initial question around timing. Um, and, and our approach, I'll just say that overall our approach and methodology is highly customized. And, and that translates into a little bit of a lengthier timeline, although I, I do see opportunities to shorten that timeline a bit. In, in overlapping the two phases of our project between classification and compensation, I'll be happy to work with, with, uh, staff to be able to accomplish that. Uh, but also be, uh, happy to, of course, keep the council updated or, uh, we often work with, um, I, I see the city has a, a finance and administration subcommittee that we often work with. So we'd be happy to do that as well. Um, I would like to make one comment regarding the PDQ and the questionnaire. Um, there's a very sort of methodical thought process behind why we, um, you know, put the questionnaire through this process of the employee completing the questionnaire, the supervisor reviewing it and providing comment. And then we actually require a second level of review from the next uh, manager in the reporting structure. Um, both supervisor and manager are instructed not to change anything that the employee completes in the questionnaire, but to only comment. And the reason we do that is because, because we want to make sure that we have a, almost sort of a 360 degree view of the entire body of work. Uh, from the employee's perspective, as well as from the supervisor and manager perspective. So it's a very common part of our process, um, that we find very helpful to us to ensure that we're not missing any details. I will also, the last comment I'll make is around, uh, the, the labor market we're going to identify. Uh, that being the, we call them comparator or survey agencies. And we will again, certainly work with, with staff in a very collaborative fashion to identify those agencies that are most uh, similar and comparable to the city of Malibu. Um, I, I can share that I actually worked on the, um, class and comp study in 2000, that's a city that in 2006. And I've certainly learned, um, you know, several aspects about how unique the city of Malibu is in terms of being a coastal city, the environmental, um, challenges and regulatory challenges that you face. And so we'll take all of that into consideration when we're, when we select the labor market to compare you to. And then that is also very customized, um, survey that we do where we literally will work with individual other cities and do a, a very in-depth job matching. So we typically don't use published surveys like you would in the private sector, because we have the luxury of obtaining job descriptions and salary schedules and, and we are able to make phone calls and talk to HR people and operational people to really make sure that the, the data we will provide back to you is highly customized and, and validated. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve three B six. Um, subject to, um, two caveats, one, and, and that we ask Steve McClary and or Joe Tony to, um, work with the, um, consultant, one, to shorten the time that it takes to get this done from what is proposed. And two, that you give consideration to finding a way to maintain the confidentiality of the responses. I've been involved in 360 degree reviews before. In my experience, the supervisors don't learn who said what or they just, they get the information, but they don't, as far as the, as part of their feedback, but they don't learn who said what, because that chills the process of being candid. Um, so it's not just a question of agreeing with what they said, which I appreciate that the supervisors don't make any changes, but it's a question of the supervisor's participation, not chilling, um, proper and candid answers. So, but I, I'm not going, I'm not proposing that that be part of the approval, that those changes be made to the contract, just that we ask Joe and Steve to get those, um, to look at those things with the, with the, um, consultant while they're doing the work. Do I have a second?
One second.
Thank you. Is there any, just any further discussion?
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Go ahead.
Uh, just with regards again to the, the study project team, making sure that we have a good cross-section of employees on that and that it's not just a certain particular group that, that we open it up to uh, all levels of staff for the opportunity to participate in that. So we get, uh, voices from everyone.
Can we ask the consultant if there's a reason why that would not, what, you know, why that would be detrimental to doing this properly? If, if there's any reason?
I don't think it would be detrimental, um, other than the fact that the more people we work with on a project team, the, the more that could actually extend the, the, the length of a project a little bit, but we've certainly again, would be happy to work with um, with staff to identify individuals who are, you know, maybe kind of a leadership position, who uh, are, are in a good position to be part of the project team. We, our process is very, uh, uh, transparent and, and interactive and collaborative. So we certainly appreciate um, a lot of employee input and feedback along the way.
So Mary Ann, can we make your friendly amendment to ask Joe and Steve to also look into that with the consultant and use their discretion?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll accept that.
I'll accept it also.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Sure. Let's get a roll call then.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Gersondi?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Urey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. So before the break, last item is three B seven. Um, who pulled that?
We have a speaker sign up for that item. It's Scott Dietrich and he is in the meeting, so we can hear from him now.
Okay. Well, Scott, first question for you is, do you wish to get a report from the staff or do you just have comments you want to make without a report?
Uh, the report would be great. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we have a, a request to abort a construction contract to GMZ in, in the amount of nine million, seven hundred and seventy-six, nine ninety-one for the PCH Signal Sync um, system improvement project and also to, um, to execute a cooperative with Caltrans for this project, uh, with that, I'm available for questions.
Scott, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, this is something that not only staff, but the Public Works Commission has been, uh, dealing with for a number of years. Seems like it's taken a long time. And if you remember our PCH safety study, uh, this was, I believe, one of the recommendations that as we've looked and, and I believe, yeah, Paul, I, you, you were chair of, uh, the commission at the time. And you know, we've all, uh, across the entire city tried to come up, how can we make PCH safer, safe, safer, excuse me? And this, this is, we think, a really good way, a step forward, um, to make it work. And, uh, so, uh, on behalf of the Public Works Commission, uh, just wanted to let you know that we have been supporting this all along. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Is there any council comment? Mary Ann?
Yeah, I have a number of questions. Um, how long will this project take to construct? I didn't see that in the report. Do you want me to go through all my questions or one at a time? How would you prefer I do it?
I can do, I can do one at a time.
Okay.
So, um, it's going, it's going to take a while to get complete because of availability of some material. Um, specifically signal poles take quite a long time. It could take six to eight months to actually get it. However, I, you know, we've been seeing some better production of those coming out. So we'll see how it goes. We're very conservative with our, with our, um, construction schedule, but it could, it could take potentially over a year.
Okay. Um, what will the impact be to motorists? Um, any modifications for the summer months?
Uh, summer months, we, we have a moratorium on, on traffic lane closures. Uh, uh, traffic lane closed, traffic lanes will not be closed during the day during that, during, um, the summer months.
And what will the motorists expect during just regular times? Are we going to have lane closures throughout the process?
Yeah, it could be. They, they are planning to put a, um, a conduit from Topanga all the way to John Tyler, but that's going to be all done underground. So the footprint for that actually, uh, a part of the work won't, won't be extended that, that far. It's a, it's a small footprint for construction. Um, so there'll be some close, some closures, but, um, we'll, we'll try to minimize those impacts.
Okay. Um, the new pedestrian crossings at Malibu Beach Inn and La Costa, have they been factored into the effects of this?
Yes.
Okay. Um, what is the status of the left turn, uh, realignment at Nobu? Um, I know there was talk about wanting to do that and there was um, maybe some adjustment to the timeline of that because of this project. I was just wondering, how does that factor in?
Um, that, uh, the planning commission, uh, uh, this, that part of the project was brought to the planning commission. Planning commission made, made a, made a recommendation and I agreed to hold off on doing that left turn over at Nobu until Nobu came in with their CDP modifications to, to their project. And so, um, that's what we're, that's what's happening right now is that, um, they are coming back. Nobu's coming back with a CDP amendment. And we will look at those impacts and see how, um, the, the left turn plays into that.
But this will, that'll be able to be included. I mean, the, the infrastructure will be there, so it'll be able to, to, to make, Jen. Okay.
Right.
Um, what about power outages? Um, is there backup power included in this?
Um, there'll be new battery backup power to, to these. Um, it, it's going to have a newer system that have more reliable battery backups.
So I, I mean, I just noticed yesterday, uh, morning view, the light was flashing red most of the day. Um, is that something that we would avoid with those battery packs or is that? I'm just trying to get an understanding of how this will work.
The battery backups will be upgraded for all, all the signals from John Tyler to, um, um, to Topanga and, and, and they will have a better system for, uh, supplying alternative power to those signals.
Okay.
Hope. Um, it, it will go into flash after a certain period of time.
Okay. And I have only one more question. Um, how will the traffic malfunctions be identified and who will control the, um, solutions? So basically if we, we end up with a backup at Malibu Beach Inn, how is that going to be and who will adjust that? Is that going to be done by Caltrans? Is it done by a regional area? Is it something that Malibu does?
Yes.
So it happens on a Sunday afternoon and we're waiting on somebody outside the area to fix a problem and we're stuck with traffic?
No, no. Yes, as a general kind of a thing. So all the traffic signals will be connected to Caltrans, uh, traffic, um, uh, information center, which is in Glendale that monitors traffic and everything else. But another thing that this project will have and, and is very, um, cutting edge and new technology is it has dynamic signal timing. And so it'll have sensors and ability to adjust the traffic based on actual conditions in the field. No one will have to, to change those parameters, change the traffic, uh, signal timing to accommodate the traffic that's coming in. Something that's very new, 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 new technology for this, for this stretch that's going to be, um, very helpful. So no one will have to adjust it.
Thank you very much.
Paul?
I'm now in my seventh year of meetings about this project and I can't tell you how eager I am to see a situation where when, when something is wrong with the timing of the light, the person who's in Glendale will be able to adjust the timing of the light without sending somebody out in a truck who's on triple overtime and all the rest of that. And I'd like to make a motion that we pass, uh, we authorize the mayor to execute a construction contract with GMZ Engineering, or however Trevor wants us to describe this and uh, I'm suggesting we pass item three B seven.
Staff's recommendation.
Staff's recommendation. And did I hear a second? And a second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? There being no further discussion, can we please have a roll call?
Councilmember Gersondi?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Urey?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay. It's nine twelve. Um, we've been going at it for quite some time and we've got a long item coming up. Uh, let's take a let's break till nine twenty-five, nine twenty-five. Be back then.
Thank you.
Shut your microphones and cameras off. Shut your microphones and cameras off. Sorry to keep you waiting. No problem. We're waiting on Doug.
Hang in there, Trevor.
I'm gonna get started, Doug will assume we'll ju, we're, I'm not gonna get to the substantive point yet. Um our
There he is.
Okay, great. Welcome back, everybody. Um, before we get to the appeal, um, our rules provide that no items will be taken up after ten thirty PM without a two-thirds vote of the city council. That, it's inconceivable that this item's gonna be done by ten thirty. And we may have people who are going, who are on the um, Zoom only so they can make comments to items that come up after the appeal. So I wonder if we could get a um, at a minimum, a straw indication, if not an actual vote, on what we're going to take up later and what we're gonna have to, what we're gonna pass on, if anything. Um, does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Let me see, Kelsey's hand.
Kelsey?
Mayor, I just thought if it was helpful, since you're concerned about speakers, um, the only item after the appeal that currently has speakers items, signups is item three D six. You have two speakers. Individuals can, of course, still sign up to speak on other items, but those are the only speaker signups they have at the moment.
Three, three B six?
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, six C.
Six C.
I'm terrible.
Okay, so that's the southern, southern
Mm-hmm.
Southern California Edison Vegetation Management Program. So um, I'm gonna move that we do the Southern California Edu- Edison Vegetation Management Program um at, either before the appeal or after the appeal, but that we decide right now that we're not gonna do the other ones. Does anyone, is anyone willing to second that?
That's, that's a mo, is that a motion to continue all items except for six?
Better language, thank you.
I would second that because the vegetation thing is gonna be a short item, so yes.
Paul?
Uh, I am opposed to that and I think we should go on and see what we can do. We have some stuff here that I think we can get through. And in spite of the thickness of four A, I don't think it's that complicated.
Alright. Anyone else have comment?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see if, how much we can plow through and, you know, let's, let's see where we are after we get through the appeal. If there's only one person for the Edison piece, that's got a comment. If they'll bear with us, we'll, we'll try and get through.
Okay, Mary Ann, do you have any comment?
I just, I would like to get our agenda completed tonight.
So, alright, we'll draw the motion and let's move forward and see where we, that takes us to four A.
Joe's got a question or comment.
Joe, sorry.
Yeah, apologies, Mayor. I just wanted to comment that at least in the mid-year report, there are some adjustments and additions that we were asking council to approve. Um, an example would be like a position, we were trying to add the Assistant City Clerk. Um, so if we delayed on some of that, it would just push things back, but they're not time urgent. There's no deadline, but wanted to point that out.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll make those decisions apparently when we get to them. So that takes us to four A ordinances and public hearings. Appeal number twenty-two oh seven, oh oh seven, appeal of planning commission resolution number twenty-two forty-four for thirty-one, one thirteen, Baylor Road, owner Ellis and Williams, Ellis, appellant Deborah DeCray. First thing we do is find my agenda, staff report. Oh, actually, recuse take this, before the staff report, so are there any recusals? Mary Ann?
I don't have recusals. I do have disclosures. Do you want those now or later?
No, I think we take them later. This is just recusal, this is just recusals. Okay, so staff report.
Mayor?
Oh, yes.
In the staff report, I mean, I don't know if we did this at the planning, when I was in the planning commission, but I, I would like if Adrian is gonna deliver the staff report, also give us some indication of what took place at the planning commission meeting. What were some of the planning commissioners' concerns with this thing, uh, whether they are valid for us to consider or not? I, I would just like to make sure we got them on our radar screen, so if there's something there that makes some sense, we can bring it up. So if Adrian can start to give us it's not in this, it's not in the staff report, but if Adrian could add that to his, his staff report, I sure would appreciate it.
Anything further?
That's it.
Okay, Adrian? If that's, whoever's making this effort work, please make this effort.
Yeah, it, it's Adam, not Adrian this time.
Okay.
Um, good evening, Mayor and council members. Uh, the appeal before you today is of the approval of, of the Woolsey Fire Coastal Development Permit Number twenty-two dash zero zero six located at three one 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 three Baylor Road. Next slide, please. So on August first, twenty twenty-two, the planning commission adopted resolution number twenty-two dash forty-four approving CDP WF number twenty-two dash zero zero six. And on August eleventh, twenty twenty-two, an appeal was submitted to the city by neighbor Deborah DeCray. And on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, the appellant submitted an updated appeal letter containing their reasons for appeal. Next slide, please. On the left-hand side, we have a vicinity map giving you a sense of the property within the neighborhood. And on the right-hand side, we have an aerial photograph of the subject property. Next slide, please. So the scope of work for the project includes uh, reconstruction of an existing driveway and turnaround area, construction of new retaining walls and construction of two-car, of a two-car garage and decking on steep slopes. Associated with the scope of work are three specific discretionary requests. Uh, a variance for construction on steep, on slopes steeper than two and a half to one. A variance for height of retaining walls over six feet in height, but not to exceed twenty-four feet, seven inches, and a combined height up to thirty-two feet, one inch. And lastly, a variance for non-exempt grading over a thousand cubic yards, not to exceed two thousand, one hundred and thirty cubic yards. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So here we have a look at the existing site plan on the, on the left and a proposed on the right. With the driveway and turnaround area, uh, outlined in red. And you can see on the right, uh, proposed site plan is the footprint of the proposed single-family residence, which was approved under a separate permit. Next slide, please. And here's those same site plans with a color-coded slope analysis overlaid. For reference. Next slide, please. And here's a, uh, the Los Angeles County Fire Department approved site plan with the. Uh, updated design of the driveway and turnaround area, along with the required five-foot walkway around the residence, all hatched in red. Next slide, please. Uh, here's some site photos, uh, taken from the street going up the driveway. Uh, give you a sense of the condition of the driveway, along with the slope of the driveway. Next slide, please. And then at the top of the driveway here, we have the existing turnaround area and a portion of the building pad. Next slide. So the, uh, appellant's reasons for appeal are, uh, summarized in five elements here. Uh, one, the requested variances are excessive and can be avoided or minimized if the existing fire department parking and hammerhead turnaround area continues to be utilized. Two, the new residence should be reconstructed on the original house pad. And then the footprint expanded to accommodate the additional ten percent by utilizing the available side, rear, and front yard setbacks. Three, of the alternative project designs considered, rebuilding on the existing building footprint was not considered. Four, the project is not in conformance with the goals, objectives, and policies of the general plan, Malibu L U P and the hillside ordinance. And five, the project alternative that is the least damaging should be used, and the required findings for the proposed project can't be made. Next slide, please. In sum, staff recommends adopting Resolution Number twenty-three dash zero nine, denying the appeal and upholding the approval of C D P W F twenty-two dash zero zero six. And to, uh. Reference, uh, council member yearings request here, um, I'll also ask for, uh, the Planning Director Malika to. Assist in the discussion of the planning commission meeting. But I believe the. Discussions that were. Had during the meeting centered on the existing driveway and the slope of the proposed driveway. Along with the amount of grading that was required to create the new turnaround area. And the, uh, proposed driveway and how that measures to. The, uh, L A County Fire Department's regulations and their ability to interpret their own regulations. And whether the engineering of the site is being done in a way that's most effective. Um, and I believe we have the applicant team here as well, who can speak to that conversation. As well, but Richard, if you have anything to add, please feel free.
Certainly, uh. I'm double-checking, Adrian is actually not working right now, uh, but, uh, got him on the line here. And the other concerns that, uh, we recall were also concerns about the easement. As well as maintenance of this new driveway. And I, I'm hopeful that, I think those are about the only two I wanna add, Adam, to what you, you mentioned. Um. I'm looking, trying to see my notes from that meeting, but I, I don't see anything else. I'm sorry, I'm not recalling anything else.
Is there a further report?
Mayor, no, that concludes our presentation this evening.
Okay. Um, council member disclosures, who wants to go first? Paul?
I had next part a, uh, meeting with, uh, the. Appellant. And her attorney at their request. Uh, last Sunday morning, we talked for about an hour. And then, uh, I went and visited the property without anybody present there, uh. Other than, uh, I talked to, to the, the appellant with Mary Ann and Mary Ann, and when I went up and walked up onto the, the building site. The build, the owners were not present or any of their team.
Did you learn anything that isn't in the, um, material, the public materials?
I learned that's a very steep driveway and it's not in good shape.
Trevor, anything else that Paul needs to state?
No, that, if there's any other information that's not in the, uh, in, in the materials of the record, that we need to disclose, but it sounds like he didn't make.
Okay. Mary Ann?
Um, yes, I did, uh, meet with the appellant and, um. Another member of the public, uh, along with Councilmember Gressanti. Um, again, we spoke to about an hour to the appellant and such, and then we visited the site. Um, and, uh. It is, I would absolutely agree, it is an incredibly steep driveway, probably one of the, the steepest I've seen. Um, the other thing that I have that, as my previous role as the Senior Permit Tech with the City of Malibu. I did, uh, work on the building plan check submittal. Of this project, um, I was not involved in the approval of the project. I simply, um, took in the project and forwarded it on to the other reviewing departments. Um, as the duties of the permit tech, uh, position require. And that's it.
Councilmember Riggins, did you have any involvement in any discretionary review, um, or decisions made on this project?
I did not.
Okay, thank you.
Steve?
Yeah, I had a phone call with Pat Healy and Deborah Decray, uh, Sunday morning for about, I had a couple of questions. That, that I had, and we, we covered those. Um. The only thing I learned that I didn't know before is that nobody apparently had submitted. The original driveway to the fire department for review or approval. I did, I, I had thought that had been done, but it had not. Uh, that's what I learned from that conversation.
Doug?
Uh. Probably, uh, not, uh, contrary to what's already in the package, but I did do, uh, separate review. Uh, using the internet or Google Earth, uh. To view the site. No one else contacted me, though.
Okay, and for my part, um, I was asked to engage in export a conversation with the appellant, but as a matter of policy, I do not do that, so I didn't. So I haven't had any contact with anybody about this. Um, that takes us to the, uh. Let me ask this question, do, do I have discretion to reverse the order of who goes first, or is this set in stone?
Uh, I would not recommend doing that, um, we, you know, we'd be. Changing our, the process that's been adopted by the, the council here, if you have a majority of the, of, of the council that does want to.
If, if it's, if it's the process that's been approved, um, I'm bound by it, fair enough. So the appellant team will present. Would, who would like to do that, and would you like to reserve time for rebuttal?
We have Deborah Decray here as the appellant. She is on the same, um, Zoom account as Pat Healy, so we're gonna ask to unmute that device.
Can you hear?
We hear you, Pat.
So. What am I supposed to say?
Before you start, you've got, Heather, how much time? They have ten minutes?
They have fifteen minutes and they can't reserve time for.
You have fifteen minutes to speak your piece, and you need to tell us whether you wanna take less than fifteen so that you have time afterwards to respond to the applicant.
Okay, um, honorable city council members, um, I will present this and I want to save time at the end.
How much time?
Okay.
Can you tell us how much time you wanna preserve?
Well, I, I don't know exactly how long it'll take me.
Okay.
Okay, uh, my name is Deborah Decray. I own and live at three one one two one Baylor Road, which is directly below the burnout house, which is on the slope above. I am requesting the city council to deny the three massive variances that were approved by the planning commission. And that would allow a totally new project to be built on this steep hillside. This is not a rebuild of the existing structure, this is totally new. Um, the variances are for fifty-two hundred and fifty cubic yards of grading on slopes, which. Equals about five hundred or more truckloads of dirt and concrete to be taken away. Thirty-two feet high retaining walls that are five times the building code of six foot high. And grading and construction on very steep slopes of two point five to one and one to one. This is not the boat, the least environmentally damaging option. Denying the variances will allow the appellant the ability to submit the existing fire department driveway and hammerhead turnaround. To the fire department for reapproval with any needed upgrades. The existing driveway and turnaround was not submitted to the fire department for approval. Also, the fire department did not require a new driveway and turnaround. The, this is not a reconstruction of the driveway, this is totally removing the old driveway, concrete driveway and, and building a whole new one. Um, Ms. Ellis, the applicant testified at the planning commission hearing that he would rather have his home as it was instead of the new proposed configuration. If the existing previously fire department-approved, undamaged hammerhead turnaround and driveway is approved by the fire department. Then there is no need for these three variances. The garage and septic can be constructed in their original locations. And the garage was located on the first floor of the two-story, uh, dwelling. The hillside will be preserved. As the is and slope stability will be protected. Also, between seven hundred and fifty thousand and million dollars will be saved. And construction time will be reduced. Uh, there may be some less drastic variances that are required because of the slope. But they would have very little impact on it. Uh, this would be the least environmentally damaging of all the options, as it reduces grading, retaining walls height. And number, and there is less grading on very steep slopes. Uh, the existing turnaround pad. Is the same dimensions and flatness as the proposed one, and doesn't require massive grading or removal. The existing driveway is twelve to fifteen feet wide. The fire department requires fifteen feet wide for a residential driveway. Not twenty feet. The existing driveway currently can be widened where necessary to comply with the fire department regulations. And with far less, uh, impact and cost. Impact on the environment and cost to the applicant. The, uh, proposed new driveway is mainly sixteen feet wide. Uh, the existing driveway is not. Steeper than the proposed per the color-coded slope analysis in the staff report. The, uh, existing concrete driveway has been used. For forty years by cars, trucks, and heavy construction equipment with no problems or safety issues. And I would say that it is still in good shape. I've walked it number of times. It, it could be refurbished, uh. Uh, you know, uh, but, uh, it is not, it is very good condition. And, uh, in the pictures, it looks like there's something on there, but that's pine needles that are just resting on there. Um. Use, uh. Using the original burn down location is the least environmentally damaging, um, option. And, uh, thank you, and I'd like to retain the rest of my time for rebuttal.
Okay, so you've got ten minutes left. Um. Now we'll hear from the applicant team.
Yes, we have David Ellis here as the applicant, and we'll see if he needs anyone else to speak with him.
Uh, hello, yes, I think I would like, uh, some other members of my team to speak. I wanna be very brief, cuz I appreciate your time this evening. I, I will say, in November of twenty eighteen. I couldn't imagine that we would be here four years and three months later. Waiting for our community to give us permission to move back into our home. And I want you all to think about that for one moment. And I will say that Deborah, who you just heard from, I have not heard from at all to see about the health or our well-being. Until she appealed this. And what she said was a lie. We did ask the fire department if we could rebuild, and they said no due to the steepness of the driveway. And we have spent four years and three months. To try to come back and be a part of this community. We would like to be able to rebuild our house after a natural disaster. I actually think this is shameful, and I will let the rest of my team go from here.
David, who, who would you like to speak?
Um. Either, uh, Susan, or, or I believe that we have an engineer on as well.
Maybe Susan. Um, Trisha's gonna go next. She's a civil engineer on this project. I assume you guys can hear me. My name is, uh, Tricia Coffey. I work with the Cert Engineering and, um. I'm a civil engineer, um, I do a lot of houses and whatnot in, in, uh, in the city of Malibu. Um, mayor and council members, um. David and Kate Ellis have lived in Malibu for many years. They lost their house in the Woolsey Fire, and. You can, you can be assured that they do not want to build a million dollars in retaining walls in order to be able to build their home back. What they have is they have a condition that has a very steep driveway. And so typically, when I start on a project, I take. The home that is designed by the architect, and then I bring my road to a, to the home. This was the exact opposite. Because this driveway is so steep, I actually started the design with the driveway. Because the existing driveway has slopes with an average slope over around thirty percent with a max of forty percent. The fire department typically wants fifteen percent. They'll go up to eighteen percent, and sometimes they'll push to twenty i- if, if you push. This driveway i- is one of the steepest driveways I've ever worked on in my entire career. So that is the starting point that we're dealing with here. We have a driveway that needs to get to a home location, and that driveway is too steep. So the process that, that we went through is you have to evaluate the existing roadway. One, it's too steep. Two, the turning radius is too tight for today's engines. They, they just, the turning radius does not work for the existing driveway. The transition slopes that are required by L A County Fire, it just doesn't have it. Um, the driveway i- is, is narrow, and the turnaround at the top, if you could call it a turnaround, is undersized substantially. So while there is a driveway to a home site. It doesn't meet today's fire code. So in a perfect world, we would put that house back right where we, right where it was, but this is where we're at. So the process that we went through is I started the design with four different driveway layouts. And then Susan Valane, who, who's our expediter, and the architect. Took it to the fire department and started going through the process of what they would accept with, for the fire department. So that was the start of property, it, the start of the process. There was no starting with designing a house and doing it that way. It was literally starting with the driveway and then moving into a house to design a house around the, around the driveway. So that we could get David and, and Kate back into a, into their Malibu home. So I am available for questions, um, I am around. If you, if you need anything else, I am here. But I think the, the staff report really speaks for itself, and I think the project speaks for itself. No one wants to have walls this, this large, and no one wants to have. Um. Uh, the, the variance that it, variances that have been requested. But I, but I'm here if you have questions, and I would like to reserve the rest of my time for the rest of the team.
There anyone else on the team that has anything to say at this time, or we're just going to public comment next?
Susan, you raised your hand. Did you need to speak as part of the presentation?
I just want to reiterate what Trisha said. And that is, we have a unique set of circumstances here with this. Lot, it's a flag lot. Very, very steep. Uh, the fire department has, uh, their own codes and regulations that. that have to be met in order for them to sign off and stamp plans. We are dealing with life safety issues. If they have to get up and put out a fire or they need to drive an ambulance up uh or run up with a stretcher, they have to be able to get to a a burning home or what have you. So they have very strict uh codes. And like Tricia said, uh, it there was a lot of, you know, back and forth, a lot of design meetings, et cetera, went into getting the the existing roadway um to a point where the fire department would approve it, and they did make concessions um to, you know, help us get this approved. I'm available for questions and um if any, any of the uh council has questions, please don't hesitate to uh ask me.
Thank you. So um if that's the conclusion of the applicant team, you have nine minutes and fifteen seconds left.
I'm sorry, Mayor. It looks like their architect has raised his hand. I wasn't sure if he was supposed to present as part of their team as well.
Hi, Commissioners, can you hear me?
We can.
Thank you for hearing our um our project tonight. I just wanted to say a couple brief things. Um. Number one, when we started this, as Tricia said, she kind of went first and then I designed a house based upon um her elevation heights of the driveway that the fire department would approve, which took a long time for the fire department to and many, many meetings for them to even approve what we've um ended up with and they finally were happy with. Um, I did go to the Coastal Commission in Ventura and got the existing house plans, which is in the project boxes. And the house design, as you can see from my documentation on A1D, is positioned in its original location, plus our ten percent is the dropdown portion of the house in order to put the garage where Tricia ended up at the top of her um driveway. So with that, the house is really trying to keep the existing condition, what was there with the same views and the same proximity of everything. Of course, we would like not like to have to put all this money into a steep driveway, but um, we have no other choice because of the life safety issues that we were confronted with. I think that's the end of our presentation at this time.
Okay, thank you. So you have seven minutes and fifty seconds. Um, is there a public comment, Heather?
Yes, we have one speaker from the public signed up to uh speak, and that is Pat Healy.
Good evening, uh council. I think it's already been said, but I was concerned about preserving the natural environment and having the least environmentally damaged project built. And many of the variances uh findings for this proposed project cannot be made in good faith. For example, you can't make them quite finding that this is the least environmentally damaging alternative. And uh for this reason, the project should, the variances should be denied. Steph, you know, looked at two other hypothetical alternatives, but they failed to look at this option of keeping the project on its current location using the existing building pad and the pre-fire residence and garage at on the on the original building pad and using the existing driveway and existing turnaround. And uh the existing turnaround does meet the fire department uh dimensions. And um also the driveway itself can be widened and um was much less grading and obviously and uh, you know, made to 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 meet fire department uh standards as far as refurbishing it and everything. Um, another finding that can't be made is that the proposed development is consistent with the surrounding properties in the vicinity. Therefore, the granting of this variance uh will constitute a special privilege to the applicant. In the surrounding neighborhood, Beller Road, there are no long driveways and the garages are attached to the residence. Therefore, the applicant with this design will be receiving a special privilege. Um, I'm asking you to please to deny these variances, give the applicant the ability to explore with the fire department, the existing pre-fire um uh, the existing pre-fire um uh um uh driveway and turnaround and as it can be upgraded. And um, thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you, Pat. If there's no other public comment, that would take us back to the appellant. You have
Yes, and I I will adjust their speaker for their remaining ten minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, there you go. Um, some of the things that were presented uh by the applicant staff group are really not true. Uh, they, the staff report shows that it was not presented. They thought that it wouldn't pass. They presumed it wouldn't pass and they did not submit it to the fire department. Um, I contacted the fire engineer and he uh emailed saying he had approved the existing uh driveway and turnaround. And this driveway, yeah, the house, I think, was built in like nineteen eighty. And uh the driveway was put in at the time. It is was built to the fire department standards as far as the the pad, which is the same dimensions as the one that they're moving twenty-six feet down the hill. And uh and it uh it the it can be widened to the fifteen feet, which is the requirement for residential driveways now. And uh the curves can be widened to uh it actually traverses across the thing, so it's actually not as steep as going straight up the hill. Um, they had to move the pad down the hill so that they could get that twenty-two percent. But we're going all the way up to the pad and and it's not as steep. Um, I I had no contact with the Ellis's. They moved away, so there was no way for me to, you know. I I really feel for them. It was four years, but but you know that the city has been investigating why it's taking this, the planning, um, I mean, you know, the planning and department so long to approve all these. They're not the only people who waited four years. There's some people who haven't even I guess even got their applications in. But the it has nothing to do with anything that I've done. And I think that we would be remiss if we approved something that was just because of the timeframe. Also, if if we could get that driveway approved and that put it back where it was, it would save them a lot of money. And uh and it would speed up the construction time because they wouldn't have to tear up the whole big concrete driveway and and uh turnaround pad. They could just refurbish it. Um. So um I I heard her say that, or one of the speakers say that they had got concessions from the fire department. So why can't they get concessions on the existing? Um, and like I say, I think it would be, it's been safe for forty years. There haven't been any problems. The Ellis's are the second residents and not the original owners, but they were up and down that hill all the time. There's been trucks and and um, since the fire, there's been uh uh, construction equipment, grading, testing, all sorts of things up there, and they seem to have no problem. Um, and the the driveway is in good shape. I've walked it all. There's pine leaves and stuff, but it's in good shape. And I guess that's um, that's about all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis, do you or your team have further comment? See Mr. Coffey's hand. Oh, Mr. David, why don't you go first? It's your application.
Thank you. I'll be brief and let Tricia go. Um, I I I do want to say um Susan and Jonathan and I did meet with the fire department in in late eighteen, early nineteen. And they had told us they will absolutely not approve our our driveway. Most of this time during the last four years has been trying to figure out how to get a fire department approval, and I'm just going to stop there.
Thank you. It's Coffee.
Yeah, I I just wanted to speak to the um, to the slope of the driveway. The the slope, the existing slope of that driveway is 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 extreme. I it's the one of the steepest driveways I've ever encountered i- in my career. And the she has discussed that that uh the length of the driveway was um was shortened uh with the new driveway layout. And while it is shorter, the reason why it's shorter is because we had to do that to be able to meet the turning radius requirements of the fire department and also to be able to come in on a leg of the hammerhead, which is the way the fire department requires that you come into a hammerhead. So it was, while there are, there is one less curve in the driveway. Um, it this was i- it's this is this is required to be able to meet a fire life and safety uh requirements of the county. Uh, yeah, I I think that was the the items and and I'll I'm gonna let uh David, I'm gonna let Susan discuss with the um interaction with the fire department. Um, they were the ones who presented it to the fire department. I was not. So I'm gonna let them discuss that.
David, Susan, you're both unmuted if there are any other comments.
I just want to say that um, of course, it took many meetings with the fire department. The fire department is not going to approve and stamp plans that they cannot, that is not within their code. It it they they'd be up for lawsuits, especially with this project. They made a concession in that they allowed us to put the driveway in a little steeper uh to the maximum that they would allow us to go. Um, there's you're supposed to have an eighteen foot wide driveway. They allowed us to go a little narrower. Uh, we worked very, very hard, Tricia, myself, Jonathan, with the fire department and and of course, David to finally come up with a design that they would put their stamp on. And believe me, Mr. Ellis does not want to have to incur the cost of close to eight hundred thousand dollars to redo this driveway, but it's a necessity in order for him to get his house rebuilt.
Anything further? Mr. Ellis, is there anything further from your team?
No, there's nothing further. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That concludes the public hearing. So um, we're now at council discussion. I'll 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 have I have a question of the applicant team or the or the city staff, whoever can answer this. Um. Is there any a- aside from the testimony tonight, which I which I don't doubt to be truthful, is there anything in writing in the record that we that can be pointed to that shows that the fire department was unwilling to approve the same configuration that was there previously and allow the house to be where it was before? Or do we just have the applicant's word for that?
I did ask Adam to go back through the record to to double check that. This project, as I recall, and I the previous planning director looked at a number of different options. And I personally did not get any communications. But I do know that Director Blue did look at different options in trying to um relocate the um, the turnaround further back. I I I I know that she did not want to have to separate out this project. That's the key thing. Um, but I'm only aware of conversations from her and then also what the applicant has stated. I don't actually have anything in my possession from fire.
And and I I have some comments with Mr. Ellis or or your team. Do any, do you have anything that I I'm not, this is not decisive by any means, but do you have anything in writing that shows that the fire department was asked to approve the house being back where it was with the existing driveway and and said, no, that's that's a nonstarter. You've got to do something else?
Well, this this is David. I I had my original meeting. No, I didn't get in writing, but I remember sitting down with the fire department and them telling me unequivocally they're not going to do this. And then it it started all of these different options that we had to keep going through to try to figure out what to do to get an approval. I I mean, otherwise, why why would I even do this? It's just kind of common sense.
Uh, I I understand that, and and it's this is the lesson here for future applicants that getting things in writing is always helpful. Um, I said, first of all, David and Kate, I you know, this y- you you are exactly who we want to be helping rebuild after this fire. Um, you're you you live here. You want to continue to live here. You're looking to rebuild essentially the house you lost. You've been forced to move it to a different location as a result of the fire department rules. Um, this is exactly the situation where where I want to find a way to say yes, and I don't see that there isn't a clear way to do that as far as I'm concerned. Um. And you know, the just seeing the the photos of the already cleaned up site, it it breaks my heart whenever I see these photos, so uh, my heart is with you. I hope that we're going to get an approval of your project tonight and um, see what other people have to say. Doug?
Just a quick question to clarify the the what the appeal is. When I read what the uh appellant had put down his reasons for the appeal, it seems to contradict what I think the planning uh department said uh was the appeal. It's just to clarify with maybe Richard. The only thing is being a p- that is really appealable is the fire department ruling on the driveway. Is that right? You everything else has been previously approved and it's not subject to this appeal, right?
Uh, thi- this appeal and and Adam, please correct me if I miss anything here, is specific to the to the development to obtain the fire department approval. So it would be the retaining walls, the grading, uh, the paving and the fire access around the building. Correct, Adam?
Correct. It's limited to the driveway turnaround area, the portion of the garage that's on a steep slope and a portion of the decking that's on a steep slope for the five-foot required walkway around around the residence. So the house itself was approved under a separate permit. This is really just for the driveway turnaround area and those portions on steep slopes, along with the retaining walls, which are portions of the driveway and the turnaround area.
Okay, and just a clarifying question because I think uh uh Councilman Euring made this comment. The fire department did not approve, or there's no record of the fire department approving the current existing driveway. Is that correct? Not not that they could use it, but in the original development, there's no approval by the fire department, right?
Sorry, Ed, to if I may, Councilmember Stewart, to clarify. Are you asking original early approval of the fire department for the original driveway?
Yeah, back in twenty eighteen or whenever it was built, I mean, twenty, in nineteen eighty, whenever it was built.
Uh, it I believe this house was nineteen seventy-nine from what I could tell from the assessor's records. And we do not have a copy of the fire department's approval. Um, Adam, I know you and I both looked at records this morning just to confirm. So I didn't miss anything. I could not find old permits.
I cannot either.
It does seem unusual that the fire department approve a forty percent grade though for a big fire truck. That that would be unusual. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Paul? I I um I come to this with a certain amount of sympathy. Uh, I lost a house in oh seven and it had an eighteen foot wide driveway. And it took me two and then while I was permitting it, the fire department changed their requirements, which my eighteen foot previous driveway was signed off. And then the fire department changed their standards to twenty feet. Mine was a flat lot. I spent two years trying to get them to not make me make it twenty feet. And then the fire department changed their standards to twenty feet. Mine was a flat lot. I spent two years trying to get them to not make me make it twenty feet. And they they did not. And I think that that uh, I think this is a a very good solution that's come up. I think that the slope that is behind the appellant's house is gonna have a reduced weight of over five thousand pounds, that over five thousand tons. And the I'm very glad that I took the time to walk the existing driveway up to the pad because any one of you who walked up that driveway would have no doubts that there is no way the fire department was ever gonna let you reuse that again. And what went on in nineteen seventy-nine, I got here in seventy-eight in Malibu, was nothing like what goes on now. Okay, fire departments have learned all about uh, risk reduction and things like that. And they weren't contemplating a fire engine like we have now. This is an essential thing, and I would like to make a motion that we adopt resolution number twenty-three oh nine determining the project is categorically yeah, I want to make a motion to adopt the staff recommendation. Thank you.
I'll second that for at least for discussion purposes. So let's continue the discussion. Mary Ann?
Uh, I was just gonna reiterate that um, you know, it's been my experience with fire department that they want to try and improve the conditions as much as possible. And um, just look forward to a vote. Thank you. It it's an incredibly steep site, and I think any improvement's gonna benefit all the neighbors in that area.
Steve, you're?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Richard, I've got a question. In in all my years on the planning commission, when we were presented with projects that had to get approved, the project contained the house, and if there was a driveway, they were all put together in one package. And that's how we approved them. How come that just how come that did not happen in this case?
Certainly. The reason for that was that it it was a matter of uh, trying to move this along since it was a fire rebuild. The thought process was to get the the homeowners into plan check. It was gonna be at their risk. But get the house started in the planning uh, in in the plan check process so that the structural engineering and the time-consuming part of this could start and run parallel as they were going through the route of of getting an approval for fire access. Uh, but that was only done because this was a fire rebuild. You are correct, Councilmember Euring. The CDP for a new house, you you would be seeing everything in front of you right now.
Okay, so let me ask a question. It it and so we did somebody a favor. That's what you did. You did somebody, you know, they needed, so we said, okay, we're gonna get your house going before we do all the rest of the stuff. Do we do that for anybody else?
We did this practice for fire victims. We allow
Actually, we've got other other projects, but we've got stuff partially approved to get the house going, and we approve everything else later on. Drive like, is that correct?
An example of that would be DMWs. Oftentimes, we separate out the wastewater uh, for their de minimis waiver uh, to get net track runs uh, parallel to the house. And and you know, they may have pulled a PV to put the house back, a PV to put the guest house back. The the city was very accommodating to fire victims in an effort to get them moving.
And and what would the thing that you just talked about was approved separately was what the the septic system or what was what did you just mention? I I didn't catch you.
I I was giving an example, a a very common example, uh, are DMWs, septic systems. Uh, those are pulled out separately from the fire rebuild. They're processed, reported to the planning commission. And it's not uncommon to find
They're they're reported first to the planning commission, right? I mean, you approve the septic system. And then the house that everything comes after. That's what I remember taking place.
It it happened in some cases, but not all. On some of those DMWs uh, that we actually changed uh, the the reporting uh, of the DMWs and we added a chart so that we could show either pending or approved applications on there uh, so that the planning commission could see all the the actions that had or have or are currently underway on the property.
And that's not where I remember being on the planning commission, but I'm not gonna go back there. But let me ask you a question. If this project had been presented to us as one package, right? I mean, the the house, the driveway, what options would the city council or the planning commission have had in dealing with this property?
We would still be at the same place. Um, you know, based off of l- looking at this, and there was a lot of time put into this. To develop this site, unless the fire department is willing to allow for the steepness, uh, pretty much anything on this site, unless you can get an uh, an access easement through the neighbor behind is you're gonna be faced with this issue.
Yeah, but what would the plant, the city council or the planning commission had as options if this thing had been presented as a coastal development permit, all as one package?
I don't believe there'd be any different options than what you have before you.
You don't think so? You don't think the city, the planning commission or somebody could have said maybe a smaller house would have worked better for this? Or you don't think there, you don't think there's any other option available for building on this this lot that we could have considered if we had presented this thing if the way projects are supposed to be presented to the planning commission and the city council? Is that what you're talking?
The issue here
Yeah.
is that you've got a slope and the fire department's telling you that the slope is too steep. The only way to address that is you got a rise overrun issue. You either change the run or you change the rise. The run they've in the engineer can speak to this. We looked at doing a switchback, uh, trying to zigzag this thing to make the to get a longer length. That wasn't an option. Then you look at rise, either raise the bottom or cut the top. You can't raise the bottom. It's a public street. So you're left with cutting the top. So you could put an eight hundred square foot house here. But unfortunately, the height, that the the elevation of that turnaround, unless fire is willing to budge, is a fixed point. So whether it's a smaller house, larger house, it's necessary.
Design, different design. You don't think it, so you don't think there's anybody could have come up with a better way to do this? And having us grade over five thousand cubic yards of dirt, build thirty-six foot retaining walls, you think that's the only solution that somebody could have come up with for this piece of product for this project?
Based on the solutions we tried to find, yes, because the pad that that turnaround height is a fixed point. If there were a way to raise that elevation of that uh, of that so that we don't need to have um, the the situation we're in, uh, that would that would be it. But we were unable to find a solution of where there would be a way to do that because what's what would get us here is that the the wall height along that driveway is still gonna be in excess of what the city codes allow for. So if you just look at and that's why we're here with these variances. Let's that's why I say pretty much any development. It's because if you look between the street and before you get to the pad, we run into an issue. Um, it's not once you get to the pad.
I'm just wondering if there's anybody out there who you think some work could have figured out a better way to do this? I think there probably is. We just never got a chance to do that. So let me ask you another question. In in the history of Malibu, have you ever had a house, a bir- a a a fire rebuild that was rejected by the fire department? That the fire department rejected, rejected. Have you ever, have they ever done that?
I've had portions, um, I'm trying to think of a whole house, but I've definitely had portions of a house that the fire department has made homeowners eliminate because of changes in fire code.
Right?
Prior to two thousand and seven, the fire department was very lenient. And then after they were sued, I believe it was in that canyon fire, uh, the fire department really held the line on their uh, fire department requirements. And I noticed that there were a a lot less concessions given to homeowners.
And if you ever had one where they they said, no, you can't rebuild?
I I would have to look. I can think of a no because of the coastal act. Um, but off the top of my head, not sort of
I can't, I hunted around. I talked to, I can't find any place where the fire department has had prevented somebody from rebuilding their house based on a driveway. Don't know. I mean, I just, I there's never, I can't find that happening anyplace. So I'm just interested, you know, it's just really interesting the fact that we never presented the existing driveway to the fire department with some argument that said, you know, you've been using this for forty years, whatever heck it is. If we increase it by to make it fifteen feet wide, will that work for you? And there's no documentation that the fire department said no to that. Yeah, I would like, I think Bruce is right. That is something I would like to have seen. Let me ask you this. You you've been in Malibu for a long time. Uh, and you sort of understand our general plan and all the stuff that that goes into the mission and vision statement. This is a house where we're going to export over five thousand two hundred cubic yards of dirt, right? That 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 equates to at least five hundred plus trucks going out and another five hundred trucks coming. That's a thousand, over a thousand truck trips. Right? That you're proposing should be done for this house. Is that correct?
That's what the applicant's engineers propose.
Okay, and you're happy with that?
It it's not a matter of happy. It it's a matter of i- is there a justification for the the variances that
Is there is there justification to to do that much environmental damage for one single house? That the the my problem is the proportions of this thing. The proportions of a thousand truck trips, okay? That that are gonna have some significant environmental damage to, I'm, you know, we just sat through a meeting with Yolanda and her environmental sustainability group. I mean, they're busting their chops, trying to get people to take garbage. I mean, you excess stuff from chopping centers and and restaurants and and composters, so it isn't gonna create methane. And here we, what you're gonna, what they're gonna do with this house and and building this is negate what they're gonna do for the next twenty years. Pretty much, okay, and then you got, then you put these the uh, retaining walls on top of it. I mean, you know, built the cement is probably one of the biggest polluters in the industry. I mean, just think about the damage you're doing to the environment for one single house, and I can't believe there's not a better solution for this. Just doesn't, I mean, you know, doesn't make, I don't know how much we tried. I don't know how much this architect tried. I have no idea. But again, like I said, separating the house from the driveway, put it in coming, taking them separately and making this review that you've eliminated the ability to make any adjustments on the other side that may have come up with a better solution. Uh, just I just, to me, that's unconscionable. And like I said, to me, the bigger issue is nobody has gone back to that fire department and says, here's the original thing. Put something in writing and tell me you're not, that you're willing to deny that and take and deny this house from getting built if we if we keep the original driveway. I just I I don't think they do that. They haven't done it in the past. And I don't think anybody's really pushed that in this case. So Mayor, I'll come back. I may have more, but I'll take it back to you at the moment.
Okay, thank you, Steve. So, you know, I I actually do recall another appeal from a couple of years ago where the fire department required that the house be moved not off the pad, but into it into a different configuration in order to accommodate a driveway. I don't know whether that was true or not, but that's what was, that was what the record was. Um, I suspect that the reason there may not be examples in the record of the fire department preventing somebody from rebuilding or rejecting the project that's been put to the city is because homeowners know they have to deal with the fire department and get their approval first before they can present a reasonable project, and they're not gonna present one that the fire department's gonna be forced to then say no. They're gonna go to the fire department, work it out as was done here, get a yes, and then come to the city to get approval. Um, I'm reminded of um, once somebody made an argument that in a case I was involved in that a board of directors um, was beholden to the CEO because there'd never been a board meeting in which they had rejected one of his proposals, but the reason was because the the CEO always socialized the proposals and found out whether he was gonna get approval before he had the meeting, and he wouldn't propose something that he knew the other directors were opposed to. So I I think the absence of that doesn't prove anything. Um, what's significant to me is that there's no reason for the Ellis's to want to move their home. I mean, when I, when I first saw this appeal, the big question for me is why are they moving the house? You know, is this is this because they want to get a better location, a better view? What's going on here? And I'm convinced from this hearing, the reason is because that's the only way they're gonna get their house back. Um, if this had been a vacant property and a new owner of that property wanted to build this house, to me, that would be a whole different discussion. But I think that everyone who lost their home is entitled to get the home they lost back. You know, we give them ten percent extra. Big, you know, that to me, I'm not gonna quibble over that. But this is not like somebody who just wants to build a new house and it's not gonna work for all the reasons that Steve just articulated. This is someone who wants to get their house back and they're entitled to get their house back. And the question is, how can we help them or allow them to get their house back? Um, I understand the neighbors' concerns. I mean, you know, nobody likes change around their home. But everyone is being forced to accept change as a result of the fire. Uh, so unless Trevor tells me I'm wrong that um, we we've, that that it would be wrong to deny a project that gives them back the same house plus or minus ten percent because we wouldn't approve it if it were a brand new development that isn't a rebuild. I I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I think I can make the findings that are necessary for this, for this, for these variances. And and again, I mean, you know, this is an extremely sympathetic appeal, uh, not the appeal, the project. And if if I thought it was prohibited by law, I wouldn't be able to approve it, but I I just don't see that this is prohibited by law. I think that we have the record before us that allows us to make the discretionary finding. Would I like the fire department, would I like there to be a record in writing that the fire department said this is the only place you can put the house? Yes, but I I would encourage everyone to, and maybe there's probably no need to convince anyone here. Um, but th- there's no reason for the owners to go to the expense and the additional time that they're going to 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 make this project work just to get the same house. If they wanted to build something that was twice the size, I'd be suspicious. But this is just an effort to get back to their home and 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 they've been delayed so long, I can't imagine delaying them any further. So you know, Steve and I usually reflect mind on things. Occasionally, I'll approve something. I'll vote for something Steve opposes. Occasionally, he'll vote for something I oppose, but this is one where I think we're gonna be on different sides. Mary Ann?
Uh, just, it it's sounding like it's time to call the question till before.
Well, I don't call the question until everyone's had their say. So Doug, you're next.
Favorite calling a question. That's what I was gonna ask for.
Steve, any further comment?
No, I'm just really disappointed that in terms of, you know, we we talk a lot about our vision, vision and mission statements and protecting the environment and doing our, and it's all talk, because when it comes down to the point of actually enforcing that stuff. And I I don't disagree. Look, I I'm I'm sympathetic to the fact that these people are trying to get this house built. I'm sympathetic with the fact that it's been four years. I haven't kept them four years away from doing this thing. I mean, it's the process that takes place in the city, but I think we have a responsibility to the residents. We got a responsibility to the people are coming after us that that our job is to protect the environment. Our job is to do the stuff that at least the residents who voted for me expected me to do. So uh, I just have, again, you know, a thousand truck trips, thirty-six foot retaining walls are are totally out of proportion to a house of this size. Just doesn't make any sense, and I just think it's wrong. So that's my comment. Bruce, thank you.
Sure. Mary Ann, your hand is still up. Did you have further comment or is that just a relevant from?
Um, I so I I would like the engineer. I have a couple of clarifying questions from the engineer. Tricia?
Yes, I'm here. What can I do for you, Mary Ann?
Hi. Hi, um, Richard had mentioned rise overrun, and maybe you can help um, clarify exactly what is the change in elevation, if if you can quickly do it, from the street to the new building or the existing building pad. Um,
Sure. Yeah, so I mean, the roadway is a fixed point, and that's at elevation one thirty-eight. And our, um, our turnaround, and these are of course just kind of, um. Uh, you, you know, round numbers, but let's call the road one thirty-eight, the bottom of the road. And then up at the top in our current configuration, our fire department turnaround is at one seventy-two point five. That's our current elevation, uh, uh, for the proposal. And the current, the, the location where there's a turnaround is, is at elevation one ninety-eight. So we, we are dropping, our roadway, it, 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 it's. Where the existing roadway rises, it, it, we have a twenty-five foot delta there, where it actually goes so much higher on this, on the, the property, if you will. So our rise over run is such that our, we're not rising as high. So our slope is twenty-two percent, which is the negotiated, uh, slope of the road. So we went from an average of thirty percent to a max slope on our driveway of twenty-two percent.
And because of the, um, the hillside below the existing pad. By dropping it that much in order to achieve that lower pitch.
Mm-hmm.
You still have to retain now the new area behind the house, which is what's causing the, um. The height of the proposed retaining walls?
So, uh, those, the largest retaining walls are holding back the fire department turnaround, really. There are some large, there are some large walls as you come into the garage as well, but, uh, the biggest walls are on the back of the fire department turnaround.
Um, and, uh, there's no way to change the configuration of this lot to make it any less steep. Um, from the roadway to the top of the, uh, proposed pad.
So this is a flag lot, we did the best that we could to get as much distance going up the slope. Uh, this is the best configuration that we can come up with with these parameters now. Uh, and I think it was Adrian said, can, if we could get a variance and come in from a, or sorry, not a variance, but, uh, an easement, come in off a different property. I mean, uh, there are other ways to achieve it, but on this property, this is. The best that we can do, given the parameters from the fire department.
Okay. Um, I, I just wanted, you know, reiterate that, yes, there's, there's a lot of grading in. Order to achieve this, and things are not the same as they were when this house was originally built. Um, new regulations have come in, just like, you know. This house got built forty years ago under the regulations at that time, which allowed for certain configurations. We've learned through, you know, I'm guessing if this house was built in seventy-nine, the chances are that it. Possibly there was the structure there in seventy-eight that burned down in the seventy-eight fire, I don't know, it's just a guess. Um, but, you know, uh, in, in order to meet new safety guidelines for the protection of. Life of first responders and to be able to, um, access anyone who might be in distress at the house. These are what the fire department requires, and, um, I think it's just important that we. Um, do everything we can, uh, to get our property owners back in their houses. And I don't think that in this case, that these variances are, um. Providing any special treatment to this homeowner, it's just the unique configuration of this particular parcel. And, uh, thank you to everybody who's worked so hard on this, um, looking forward to the next step, thank you.
Paul? Well, I would ask you to call the question, but I will also say that the only way that, uh. You can make a house more conventional on this would require a hell of a lot more grading than, than we're talking about right now. And I can't, uh, begin to emphasize how important it was for me. To walk up that driveway and see the challenges that they were confronted with there. And I, I really think that, uh. I'm, I'm very much in favor of this, and I do want to vote on it as soon as possible, thank you.
All right, there being no further hands, let's get a roll call.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Protimurin?
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. It is as I predicted after ten thirty, so we need to decide on a item by item basis whether there is a two-thirds. Um. Approval to move forward, so, um, first item is six A fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, second quarter financial report and mid-year budget amendments. Do I have a motion to proceed?
I'll make a motion to proceed.
So second.
Well, before we.
I'll second it, now we can discuss it.
Yes, we can, Doug, uh, yeah, Doug?
I was gonna ask, uh, let's find out from, uh, the city manager or, uh. Whoever is calling the shots on some of the, uh, these, what is critical to be done tonight? Um, I think Joe made the comment, uh, that, uh, he was looking for some staff additions. Can you, what, what is it that we need to take care of before we run this meeting into midnight?
Okay, you're asking which items, not what parts of what items, right?
Uh, I have an answer to that question for you, Councilmember Stewart, so, uh, just, you know, again, I would say just to, to be hyper technical, none of the items, uh. Listed absolutely require action tonight. Uh, I would say if we do not take action on six A, it, it just simply delays us. Being able to move forward with those budget appropriations and the change on the. Or the, the presumed change on the, uh, Assistant City Clerk job description, so that would delay. Uh, the recruitment on that by a couple of weeks. Uh, we could certainly hold off on the mid-year commission activity reports. Uh, there is an opportunity there also to, to make some changes as well in the work plan. Um, uh, we could come back with the vegetation management program, uh, we could come back with the, with the grant writer as well. Uh, and, and Mr. Tony, if there's anything I missed, if the mayor would allow me an indulgence to. With my staff, uh, if Mr. Tony, if there's anything that I'm missing there, would you, uh, feel free to weigh in?
Uh, Mayor Silverstein and, and City Manager McClary, no, there's, there's nothing you missed there, just, uh, the amendments as you touched on, um, that would need to be approved.
Okay, so, so right now, the only item that's being addressed is whether we're going to move forward with six A. Is there any further discussion on that proposal? Doug, your hand's still up, did you have something further to say?
Kind of like.
Okay, so let's get a, okay, so let's get a roll call on moving, it's about, and my comment is, it sounds like. Six A is relatively important, although not critical, so I, I'm going to support moving forward on it, but let's, let's have a roll call.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Protimurin?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, so let's get a staff report on the, um, item six A, please.
All right, uh, Honorable Mayor Silverstein and members of City Council, I'll do my best to try to speed this along as we go through it and. Cut down what, on some of the things I was going to comment on, but. Uh, we're presenting, uh, the current fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three mid-year financial report, also referred to as the second quarter. Or Q two report, and this is a high level. Uh, overview of where we're at with variances and projections as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-two, and overall, we're in a very positive. Uh, position, next slide. Um, so as you can see, we, uh, have received about thirty-two point three percent of our revenue to date, that's that twenty-eight million amount in the middle. Uh, whereas we've, uh, expended about twenty point five million, uh, or excuse me, twenty point six million year to date, that's twenty-two point four percent of our amended budget. Um, this is the overall budget, but we are projecting, uh, ninety-three point nine million in revenues. Um, and that's detailed further in the report and projecting about eighty-six point eight million, uh, in overall expenditures, next slide. So the general fund, uh, is where we normally focus on, this is where the council has the most discretion. Um, revenues, we've received twenty-three point eight million, that's right at about fifty percent of our, uh, projected fifty-four. Uh, point nine million, but, oh, excuse me, that's right, about fifty percent of our amended budget, but we're projecting fifty-four point nine million. Um, that's about a fifteen percent positive growth over the amended amount, or about seven million over the amended. Um, and I'll touch on the main drivers of that on the subsequent slide. Um, and expenditures, we're at about fifteen point nine million in actuals or thirty-four point four percent of the amended budget, and that's well under the halfway mark. And we're projecting forty-one point two million. Um, so projected revenues exceeding expenditures by about thirteen point seven million. And not all of that will be undesignedated, but we'll touch on that more in the net financial impact, uh, next slide. So, uh, these are our proposed revenue adjustments, I'll touch on some of the big ones, so property tax, uh, we ended twenty-one, twenty-two. Uh, with an update from the county tax roll of about a nine point six percent growth, which is very significant. So that has a ripple effect since we base our budget this year off an estimate of where we're going to end the twenty-one, twenty-two years. So once we know that that's growing by a more significant factor, we can. Uh, apply that to this year and then how we think we're going to project to end the year. Um, and so that's resulting in about a one point three six million increase in the current year. Um, and we put that all into the secure property tax line in our financials. And that's about fifteen point two million in property tax in total, uh, projected. Uh, on the other taxes, uh, grouping, our T O T is combined to project, uh, to end with one point five million more than amended. Um, and this is conservatively in line with the trend and close to where we ended last year, we're projecting nine point. Five million total, and we ended last year with ten point three million. Um, the other significant one, sales tax, uh, so we're projecting nearly two million more than amended, this is, uh, significant growth, we're using. Uh, H D L forecast, that's our consultant for sales tax. Um, and we're also applying one quarter, uh, worth of the new transaction and use tax that went into effect, that was passed by voters in November. Um, as you recall, we were estimating three million per year. Um, so for one quarter, that's seven hundred and fifty thousand in additional sales tax revenue. Um, a couple of other ones to comment on real quick, property, or excuse me, parking occupancy tax. Uh, projecting, uh, that that'll be about two hundred thousand more, this is due to increased use of beach lots. Um, and then we also, uh, have, uh, parking citation activity seems to be trending up, so we're estimating about four hundred and sixty-seven thousand more. And that, and then all of our other licenses, permits and service charges are all increasing, that's really. Uh, due to increased development services activity, um, so next slide. Uh, so in summary, uh, total amended revenue budget of, uh. Uh, excuse me, my slide's a little blurry, uh, of eighty-six point six million, we have about seven million in mid-year adjustments. Uh, that includes the general fund ones that I just covered and an additional twenty-one thousand special revenue funds for S B thirteen eighty-three local assistance grant for solid waste management. So, uh, total amended budget of ninety-three point six million, next slide. Uh, so I wanted to bring this slide back up so we could touch on the expenditures, uh, overall, about five million in projected general fund expenditure savings compared to the amended. Uh, the big story here is salary and benefits, um, while it isn't clear in the report. Um, or in our financials, the main story is really salary and benefit savings, we have about two point eight million in salary savings, uh. We're really down nearly twenty percent of our workforce, so twenty percent of our workforce is vacant, which is significant for all of the demands we have. Um, and we're experiencing just about that amount in salary and benefit savings, uh, experiencing about nineteen percent in salary and benefit projected savings. And then the rest of the savings is really on the operating and maintenance side. Um, such as professional services, so some of those other areas where we're seeing trends, and I, I won't spend too much time on it, but. Legal counsel so far, we've, we've had a little bit less in anticipated litigation. Uh, public safety services, spending a little less on C H P on-call services, a little less on homeless outreach and support. And some miscellaneous equipment purchases. Um, and then across other departments, uh, mostly just slower trends in professional services expenditures. Um, next slide. So I won't go through all of these, hopefully this is somewhat self-explanatory, happy to answer any questions, but to try to speed up. Um, the presentation, um, we'll, we'll move on to the next slide, so these, those are all the expenditure amendments. Um, and then on the proposed staffing changes, uh, we wanted to add a senior office assistant in environmental sustainability, that'll help. Uh, the department focus on new programs and council priorities. Um, and then lastly, we'd also like to modify one of our vacant positions, one of the vacant deputy city clerk positions into an assistant city clerk. This will maintain the exact same F T E count, but we feel this will make it more appropriate for the type of work and also more competitive in recruiting. Next slide. Um, so, all funds on the expenditure front, about one point seven million in total amendments, that's the one point six six million in general fund and an additional forty-one thousand special revenue fund amendments. Now, that's twenty-one thousand, again, for the local assistance grant for solid waste management and twenty thousand for civic center waste treatment facility generator rental. Uh, so about ninety-three point four million total amended expenditure budget, next slide. So on the fund balance side, um, again, we had about thirteen point seven million gross revenues over expenditures in the general fund, net of transfers, the total general fund is growing by. Uh, seven and a half million from seventy-four point four million to the eighty-one point nine million, you see there in the middle of the slide. Uh, the top line is the undesignedated amount, so the first line is truly your discretionary fund balance, and that netted increase of about eight point three million. Uh, from fifty-seven point four million and sixty-five point seven. And then we also still have six and a half million in general fund contingencies that were originally set aside for COVID. Uh, so overall, our fund balance is about ninety-three point nine million. Uh, next slide. So on our cash and investment report, uh, this is as of December thirty-first for those balances displayed, but since that time. Um, as Councilmember Stewart alluded to earlier, we've been moving more funds from checking. And life into government investment vehicles as the insurance, interest rates have risen, making other conservative investments more attractive, and we'll do so in a staggered. Uh, fashion of different durations to try to maximize the interest, uh, over time. Uh, so you'll see those balances shift in subsequent quarters, next slide. Uh, with this report, there's no proposed work plan amendments, but we are planning to have a workshop on March twenty-second to go over all the priorities of council. Next slide, and we're giving you a little preview of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget schedule, um, so we have the. General fund applications to do, uh, general fund grant applications to do in March, special session in April. Uh, May, we have a, uh, A N F and a public hearing, and then hopefully a budget adoption in June, so yes, it's hard to believe, but we're already working on next year's budget. And with that, the recommended actions, receive and file the report, provide direction on the work plan. Adopt resolution twenty-three oh seven amending the budget and adopt resolution twenty-three oh eight amending the authorized position and salary ranges. And staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Um, we're gonna have public, if there's any public comment, but if there are questions first, that's fine, any, anybody have questions or just comments at this point? Okay, is it, Kelsey, is there any public comment?
I don't have any speaker signups, and I don't see any raised hands from the public, so that concludes public comment.
Okay, great. Paul? You're muted, Paul.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the staff recommendation.
I'll second that. Okay. Doug?
I was gonna second it, that's it.
Oh, you had your hand up, so why don't we give you the second?
Okay.
Marion?
Um, all I wanted to make a comment on is I would like to see, um, some additional, um, you, you know, we. We identified a rather large amount to planning to allow for the backlog. Well, as soon as planning gets through that backlog, it's going to end up in environmental sustainability and building safety. So I think we should be looking at ways to supplement their staffing and whether it's going to be with consultants or retired annuants. Or other ways, um, to supplement their staff, uh, when all those projects do come out of planning. Um, I think that's something we should be looking at right now so that they have proper training time. And that they're ready, and also looking at the technology to make sure that they have the technology that they need, um, and obviously that can be done. On a future one, but I wanted to put that out there publicly, um, and the only item on the work plan is, um. Number. I think it's eight, the very last item on the work plan, and it's labeled. And it's labeled Malibu Bluff Park Facility Improvements. And I would like to uh, recommend that we add the snack shack. Item to that, um, and you know, you had, uh, Mayor, you had made a comment. That perhaps staff's interpretation could be. A little bit more appropriate um, for the existing permitted snack shack that it could uh. Be identified as an existing item and so possibly we could move forward on. Making the necessary improvements to it. If you could clarify maybe a little bit on that. Other than that, I'm ready to vote on and move on to voting for the next one we're gonna hear.
All right, well, so as procedure matter first, sounds like Mary Ann's asking for a friendly amendment to add to the work plan that the um. There'd be efforts to uh, find a way to bring the snack shack back.
I'm, I'm, I'm delighted to add that to the motion.
As am I.
Okay, so um, I'll take that first, Mary, because I had to, I had this written down. Um, yeah, I, I support that. Um, what I was suggesting was, I, I don't know what the argument is. I mean, one, I don't know whether there's an argument about it, existing use. I, I suspect that one actually has been looked at and rejected because that one's pretty obvious. But I just want, when this item comes back to us in two meetings or whatever. That the staff thinks out of the box and uses the most creative arguments they can for why this is permitted. Um, it's often presented to us during appeals. Well, the appellant or the applicant argues that such and such. And I can see that argument. Uh, that's what I want to hear. I want to, I want to hear what can be argued to support doing this. And then we can decide whether we agree with that argument or not, but I, you know, but let's not find reasons this can't be done. Let's find reasons this can be done. Uh, so, and the other comments I have is first of all, you know, I hope the public appreciates. It's, it's always great news when you find out your revenue is higher than you had budgeted or contemplated and your expenses are not as high as the increased revenue. That, the, the additional expenses, that's great news. Um. Joe, for future, it would be, I think it would be helpful to see a comparison of where we were at this point in the prior year. As well as perhaps ma- multiple prior years, because looking at where we are, comparing it to what a, what we did for a full year last year doesn't tell me very much. It'd be helpful to know, because our, because the money doesn't come in one twelfth per month. It comes in staggered in different months. So it'd be good to see where we were at the same period to see whether we're doing better or not as well in that manner. Um. When we do think about the budget, one thing I, I'd like everyone to be thinking about is, I, I, I would like to see us thinking about using some of our excess reserves. To pay back the measure, whatever it was, money that requires us to build a park and ride. Um, also consideration of paying down our debt on the vacant property if we're not going to immediately start putting money to use to. Doing something with that's vacant property. So this is just some thoughts. Um, I have one other friendly amendment proposal, which we, which I alluded to earlier, which is that we add, if this is the right place to do it. That um, so racist, um, look at the question of increasing the in lieu fee. Um, eliminating the, the optionality of the developer to decide that it wants to just pay the in lieu fee. And rather put it on the city council to make that decision. And there was another part of it. Oh, and, and, and look into uh, ways in which we can facilitate affordable, um. Not housing, Doug, but the other, the other thing, a- affordable overnight accommodations. So.
Low cost visitor serving accommodations.
Thank you. That's, that's the technical term. So could, could we, could I have a friendly amendment? I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we include that to the work plan in some way. That's a racist look at those things.
Bruce, so I, I would think that that would make a great standalone. Uh. Meeting and discussion. I, I think that what you're suggesting is good, but I don't see how it results, how it. Uh, fits into our current budget discussion, which is what we've got right here.
I thought it was a work plan item.
Okay, uh.
I'm, I'm kind of like.
As a work plan item, I'm fine with it being a work plan item, but that means it's, it's going to go to the races and you're going to talk about it and come back. So yeah.
That was what the friendly amendment was to.
Okay.
The answer to the work plan for the races.
I'm, I'm okay with it then, yes.
Doug?
My comment is, if we're just gonna put it in for work plan for the races, I can live with that, but we're already four months, we only have four months left in the year. Um.
So I was proposing.
Okay, I can take that. Go ahead and put it in.
Okay. Steve McClary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to briefly respond. Um, yeah, we can certainly put the staff can put our creative hats on when we come back. Uh, with an item on the snack shack, that's not a problem. We understand that. Uh, and then so I wanted to briefly respond as, as well to Councilmember Riggins. Uh, I have had some conversations um, with our, with our environmental services director, Yolanda Bundy about staffing. So that is definitely on our radar. Uh, and we've started to have some, some talks about, you know, how we can bring that forward to make sure that we are staying ahead of that. So uh, that, that is on our radar and happy to add that on to the work plan. That's all my comments. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to approve the, well, to receive and file, approve the recommendations. Add to the work plan, the snack shack and add to the program, the, to the um, work plan, there's a racist. Item that I just identified. Um, Trevor, before we take a roll call, you have something to say?
Yeah, uh, Richard or Steve, do we need to uh, state where they want to list these two new items in the planning priority list for the work plan? Do you need further direction about, about how to prioritize these two items?
Um. Yeah, Joe, do we need direction on that or do we think we know where to slot those in? I think we can probably slot it in.
Yeah, off, offhand, I don't, I'm not sure offhand. I'd have to look kind of in the grouping to see where they, they fit, but usually we would just put it in the next. You know, the next bracket or it'd be the next one up.
Trevor, does that satisfy you?
Sure, if, if, if they're comfortable with that just being added to the, to the next, the, the end of the, 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 the work, the, the work plan is, is where you're gonna put it? Yeah, I would have to go into one of the proper priority groupings and then, yeah, it would be the next uh, for, or the last one on the list for that grouping. Does that work for the council?
For me.
We'll find out when we take the vote.
Okay.
Let's have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yuri?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Is there an appetite to go further? Somebody want to make a motion to go with, to, to proceed to six B?
I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and deal with six B.
Sure, second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Vote, roll call, please.
Councilmember Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yuri?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Sure, okay.
Motion carries.
Thanks. All right, staff report?
Yes, thank you, Officer Mayor, members of the council. Um, before you, you have your media reports. Uh, I'm not going to go through the, the details. It's, it's all in there. Uh, this is an opportunity for the council to get feedback back to the staff. Uh, also an opportunity, uh, if you would like to uh, make in, to amend any of the assignments for the commissions. Uh, this, there, there, there is an opportunity for the council to do that tonight. Uh, we do have the department heads here available to answer any questions and uh, that is the extent of my report.
Your public comment?
I don't have any speaker signups for this item and I don't see any raised hands from the public, so that concludes public comment.
Okay. Paul?
I just wanted to say how happy I was to see that uh, the Arts Commission is discussing options for an arts center in Malibu. And uh, has taken a survey uh, to get community feedback to kind of get this started. And I'm also very pleased to see in the uh, Parks and Recreation this thing. That they've reviewed and evaluated options for replacing the Malibu Bluff Park Snack Shack. And I'm, and they're recommending council consider adding an item to the work plan. For replacing the, the snack shack. So I'm glad that that was, uh, didn't come out of left field, that it was already on the work plan. And let's go for it. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve six B.
I'll second. Any discussion?
It just one, you know, one thought. I mean, this is, this is stuff that. Again, you'd like to have more residents participate in covering this item, right? This is the stuff that they want. Uh, so I'm just, I'm, you know, we're gonna go where we're gonna go, but you sure would like to have this with more participation from the community. When we're going through stuff like this, but that's just one thought.
Well, so, uh, what I'll say to that is, um, if there had been a number of people that had signed up but dropped off by now. I would agree that maybe we should have it, this discussion another time, but nobody signed up for it. So we've got the participation we've got. Roll call?
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yuri?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Sorry to keep doing this the formal way, but I, I like to follow the rules. Is there a motion to do um, six C?
I'll make a motion to do six C.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Gresanti?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Yuri?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, great. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you. Uh, Mayor, members of the council. I know the uh, I know it's late, so I will go through my presentation very quickly. Uh, the item before you is consideration of amending an existing letter between uh, Southern California Edison. And the city on their vegetation management program. Next slide. Uh, the vegetation management program is an annual program, uh, in which Edison uh, identifies hazard trees. Trees that need pruning and removal. It's a two-part uh, permitting process. Um, Edison inspectors identify the tree, uh, they report that to the city. The city arbors or the city biologist inspects the trees, makes recommendations and a permit is issued. And then the tree trimming companies contracted by Edison do the work and then there is a final inspection. Next slide. Uh, after the twenty eighteen Woolsey fire, there was a uh, significant increase in tree trimming and removal. Uh, due to the number of dead uh, dying trees. Uh, in addition to that, work was being completed consistent with the California Public Utilities Recommendation, which is twelve feet around. Uh, utility poles for high fire hazard areas. All this activity um, concerned the community. Um, and so the city staff came up with a letter agreement, um, or a letter in which um. We laid out the, uh, not only the code requirements, but staff's expectations. And Edison agreed to abide by that letter. Uh, due to the number, a high number of impacted trees, uh, because of the fire. Uh, Edison was required to report both native and non-native trees. Next slide. Uh, now post Woolsey, Woolsey, uh, four ye- four years later, uh, all of the trees or most of the trees that were impacted by the Woolsey fire. Are, have been removed or trimmed. So Edison is now just trimming back seasonal growth um, to previous cuts and removing dead trees. Um, so staff, for that reason, staff is uh, recommending that the requirement to report on non-native trees. Be removed from the agreement. The agreement would still require the reporting of heavy work and, and removal of native trees. The agreement would also keep in uh, language that would require any trimming beyond previous cuts. Um, must have uh, prior city approval. And then a, a new item that has been added is a training uh, of Edison staff for identifying the shot hole uh, bore. Next slide. The shot hole bore beetle is a beetle that causes dieback and eventual death of trees. There are trees called amplifier, which are just basically heavily infested trees. They must be chipped to a certain size and disposed of properly. And the Office of Los Angeles County Agricultural Commission has an active program, including free training to identify these trees. And uh, the best way to remove them. All of the uh, Edison inspectors and tree trimmers have participated in that training. And these train uh, requirements, as I mentioned previously, are memorialized in the agreement. Next slide. With that, uh, staff's recommended action is to direct the planning director to send a letter to uh, Southern California Edison. Revising the terms of the agreement to remove the requirement to report heavy trimming and removal of non-native uh, trees. On, for uh, non-native trees unless the work constitutes a major vegetation removal. As determined by the city's contract biologist. Uh, I, I'm not sure if they are both still here, but we did have two Edison representatives available for questions. Um, I, I, I don't see Max, but Max Green was here. Um. Uh, he could answer questions about the vegetation management plant uh, program. And Andrew Thomas is available to answer questions as well. That uh, concludes staff's presentation.
I believe you said there was public comment from one person. Are they still here?
Yes, we actually had two speaker signups, Max Green and Pat Healy, but I also no longer see Max Green in the meeting, but we do have Pat Healy. We can hear from her now. Pat, you've been muted?
Am I unmuted? Can you hear me?
We hear you, Pat.
Okay, um, I read the staff recommendation and agree with everything except item two. Where staff is recommending no longer the protection of non-native trees. These trees are important assets and need continued protection. The revised memorandum should state. Edison doesn't have the right, ha- doesn't have to report to the city. If um, the trimming that they're doing is, is um. Only seasonal growth um, cut back to the previous year's cut. However, staff is proposing to revise number two of its memorandum to remove the requirement. For Edison to provide a list of non-protective, non-native trees proposed for heavy trimming. Currently, Edison has to pr- provide a list of both the protected and non-protected, non-native trees. And this requirement should continue as well as the inspection by the city biologist of both protected and non-protected trees. That are going to be heavily trimmed. The reason I'm asking that this provision be allowed to continue. Uh, was prior to the city having this memorandum of understanding. Edison was indiscriminately over-trimming and removing trees to the horror of many of the affected residents. Once there was a city oversight, this practice for the most part stopped. Non-protected trees are valuable asset in our community and their fate should not be left to the whim of Edison's tree trimmers. Non-native trees deserve and need city oversight too. They should continue to be protected along with the native trees. A few obvious benefits of trees is why, and why they need to be continued, why they need continued protection. Is that they sequester carbon, clean our air, they um, are homes to the birds and then other beneficial insects. And add to the beauty and value of our homes. Please do not allow item two to be changed. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. That conclude public comment?
That does. I don't see any raised hands from the public and I don't have any other speaker signups.
So I, I don't quite understand. This is in agreement with S C E that already exists. And we're proposing to eliminate an obligation of theirs that they're not proposing to eliminate. Why would, why would we do that? Just, I mean, what, what, what do we get from telling them to do less work? Do you understand why we're proposing that they have less reporting obligations?
So uh, this agreement was entered into basically because of the Woolsey fire. So now that the Woolsey fire is over, um, there is no need for them to report the non-native trees. It is um, a lot of work on the part of uh, of staff, uh, city biologists. Uh, to go out and inspect non-native trees. Um, and so um, since the agreement was created for the sole purposes of the Woolsey fire. And that is no longer needed. That is why we're recommending the change.
Well, is our, is our staff obliged to do any uh, particular inspection based on the report that they receive? Or do they just get, are you just proposing to get less information?
I'm sorry, it's, it's, repeat.
If, if S C, if S C E continues to provide the information that they're currently provided, is the staff mandated to go out and check every single thing they report? is the staff mandated to go out and check every single thing they report? Or do they have discretion to decide what to look at?
Um, by the agreement, no, they need to go out and, um, to each.
Every single one?
They could have, have used discretion, but I, I don't know that they would want to because then they're guessing which ones need to be inspected and which don't.
I don't find that persuasive, but Doug. You're muted, Doug. Muted.
There we are. You know, I, I gotta tell you, I just don't trust, uh, S C E to have a license to go take down non-native trees, palm trees, olive trees. Um, I, I, Pat Healy got it right. I mean, there's, people find that, uh, Edison people come through and just whack the little daylight side of their trees. It's, it happens everywhere where there's not any restrictions. I just, I'm fine with the agreement except for the non-native trees coming out, so. I, I just, and, and I think Bruce is right. I don't see what we're getting out of this except to simplify life for Edison.
Steve?
Yeah, I tend to, I can, my, yeah, I tend to agree with Doug. I, I don't know why we're removing the non-native trees from that. I mean, I've watched Edison trim stuff all over the place. And unless there's some control, they'll just chop it all to heck, so. I, I don't see why I'm removing the non-native trees from this agreement.
Paul?
I, I have a question for Bonnie. Maybe I'm not understanding what's going on right now. It seems to me that if they're cutting back to the previous year's cut, there's no reporting required. Is that correct, Bonnie?
Joyce.
What? Joyce, Joyce, Joyce. I'm so sorry. Oh, my God. It is late.
It, yes, it is. So, um, no, the agreement as written requires, um, I, it, let me confirm that, uh, but it does not, uh, address, um, uh, giving an exception if it, they're trimming back. Are, are you, um, do you mean that if, um, are they only required if they're?
Currently requests for trimming both protected and non-protected trees mainly consist of having seasonal growth trimmed back to the previous year's cut. And, and, uh, I, I can understand we want them to report that they're doing it to a sycamore or an oak. But if it's a, a non-protected tree and they're just going back to the previous year's cut. I, I'm, if, maybe I'm not understanding here. Are we, are they? Does the change, uh, allow them to, would the change allow them to cut a non-protected tree branch of more than seven inches in diameter without any reporting to the city of Malibu?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Mary Ann?
Um, so if we deny this item, does it, does it, does it just stay as it's been? There's no change into the agreement?
Uh, pretty much because I think the only other change was adding the requirement for the training.
I'm sorry, the?
Are they, I'm sorry, the training for the shot hole bore.
Oh, so if we deny this, then they won't be required to complete the training? No.
They, they have agreed to complete the training and have al- already, uh, unless the council wishes to amend the agreement and add that one item.
Yeah, that, that would be an option instead of denial of the recommendation completely or, you know, approval of staff's recommendation, you could instead, um, you know, direct, you know, that, uh, only the shovel or beetle provision to be added to the, um, existing agreement, existing letter agreement with, uh, S C E, that could be your motion.
Right.
So which would be a better motion to deny this? Or to approve this with the condition that non-native trees not be excluded from reporting? Request?
Could, I think.
I think we all agree that we still want to see continuation of the reporting of non-native trees.
So I, Mary Ann, I think, I think what you're suggesting is the motion would be to, um, direct staff to go back to S C E with a proposal to amend it, to include the training and then sign it.
I believe so.
I don't think we need to go back. Do we need to go back to S C E, Joyce? Yeah, they agreed to add the beetle provision. Couldn't that just be added to the agreement?
Um, I, I, I believe so, uh, because Edison has not, this is an agreement between two parties and only one party is changing it. So I think the other party would have to agree to that change. Um, so yes, I, I do, if we're going to change it, it, it does seem like we would need to go back to Edison to have them to accept that. Is, is the concern for the non-native trees, um, mainly those that go above the existing cutback? Meaning if, if, if all they're doing is to trimming back to, uh, the existing cut, then they would not need to report those. It's only those that are going more, the seven inches or more that needs to be reported? Is, is, am I hearing the council right on that? Or are you saying that even if they trim back just to the existing cut, they have to report that to the city?
We haven't said anything yet. We're still formulating what we're proposing to say and we don't know whether we're gonna have agreement yet.
Well, I think, I mean, our concern is just Edison not having any oversight whatsoever. And our community seeing, um, possible excessive amounts of trimming on non-native or, or all-out removal of non-native trees. Is that sound accurate?
Uh, currently, I don't believe the city is getting any complaints about removal of non-native trees. And Richard, you can, you're there, you're there more than I am. I, I'm not aware of any, uh, complaints of removal of non-native trees.
Well, I've only received one complaint of trimming of a non-native. Yeah, but that's all.
Mary Ann, do you have any further questions or comments?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm now clearer on why we're looking at this item, to be honest with you.
Yeah, so as I understand it, we have an agreement. Where the city, the staff is proposing that we go back to S C E with a proposed amendment to the agreement. The amend, there are two amendments, if I understand it correctly. One is to, um, memorialize what S C E's already agreed to, which is to do the training. And the other is to propose to them to eliminate an obligation of theirs. I, I don't understand why in the world we would eliminate an obligation of theirs gratis. Um, just not something you do when you're negotiating, when you, when you have another, when you have a counterparty. You don't just relieve them of obligations for no reason in the world. So I'm gonna mo- move that we go back to them and propose that we memorialize their agreement to, um, do the training and otherwise keep the agreement the way it is. Do I have a second for that?
It, I, I, I don't think this is a, it's not an agreement. I don't think S C E is, as, this is a guidance document from the city is my understanding on it. It basically lays out their obligations under the L C P and if they comply with it, then we are, you know, we're not taking action. They've agreed, I think, not in writing, but they've, they've, they've agreed to follow those provisions to ensure that they do comply with our local coastal program. Richard, isn't that correct about what this document is? And the changes here, I thought you said that they had already agreed to us adding the provision regarding the, the beetle provisions. Were you intending to bring this back to them? I thought they'd already agreed to that provision. The other provisions were initiated by staff?
So.
Not from request?
Just, just to be clear, um, this is a letter that was issued by the city and reiterating, uh, what was in the L C P and then also adding, um, some language about the non-native trees. Um, and so Edison, uh, you know, verbally agreed to that, um, to abide by the letter. That's, that's all we have. So it's, that's as, we call it an M O U. It's this is formal as, as we have, um.
I mean. Joyce, I think a fair way to say it, to characterize it is it put them on notice of our, uh, chapter five protected tree standards and then also a, uh, an agreement between the, a, a verbal agreement between the city and Edison that they would just keep us in the loop of all the work they're doing. Um, it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be in a breach of anything. Correct, Joyce?
Uh, that is correct. And, and the other, other thing is, uh, in the, in the original letter, which I'm looking for. So there are two parts of the letter. There's the parameters is the first part and then the action plan. And in the parameters, so which sets the stage, um, it basically said that any work on a, in Esche requires a C D P. So that would be both native and non-native. So if the trees are in Esche, they're, they're covered, uh, regardless of whether they're protected or non-protected. And then number five indicates that work on non-protected trees, uh, that determines, uh, that the city thinks is a major vegetation removal will require a C D P. And then the action plan to ensure that, um, is that they report the removal of those trees. And so, um, the requirement to report the removal is directly related to make sure that what they're doing doesn't constitute a major vegetation removal, which is, was one of the concerns initially was that there were, uh, large groups of trees being removed, non-native trees, a whole row, a, a grove of trees that were being removed because of the fire. And so just let you know how, how.
I'm, I'm trying to say this as respectfully as I can. This is a city council discussion and, and I really is not supposed to be the staff asking each other questions and giving answers. So if, if, if council members have a specific question, I, the staff can answer the question, but it's not their discussion to have. It's our discussion to have at this point. Um, I'm, I, I, I don't underst- Trevor's question is a good one. I mean, if, I think the last page of the report, if I read it correctly, the, the presentation said, we're proposing to amend a letter agreement. If there's no letter agreement, then it's a different thing than, than what's been told to us. Is there a letter agreement or, or is there no letter agreement?
You can see the attached letters. There's no countersignature from S C E on it. So, you know, what this is, is this is us providing guidance and there's a agreed action plan, um, that they've accepted. And they have said that they will comply and we've said this is, this is the parameters and this is what you do. And then because of that, we have a system to ensure compliance with the L C P. So it's our guidance.
So, so my motion is then we, 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 we not provide them with any guidance to stop giving us notice of anything that they previously gave us notice of. And to the extent that we haven't put them on notice to do the training, we should memorialize that.
Full then, okay. So the, the motion then is just to add to the action plan, the requirement for the beetles and to circulate that to S C E. It's like.
Yeah.
I'll second that. Yeah.
Paul?
Uh, for discussion, uh, if I look at the action plan update under item number one, all we really have to do is take out the last sentence, which is S C E is no longer required to submit a list of non-protected trees regardless of the scope of work.
I think that's what the motion is. Take out that, that direction.
That one sentence. Am I missing something else? If, if I'm not missing something else, then I'm very happy to just go forward then.
Does anyone else on council think there's anything further that is involved in not relieving them of that obligation? All right, Doug, you have your hand up? You're muted, Doug.
I was just making a motion, uh, and you, you did it. I was gonna second yours.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Let's have a.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Mayor Protemury? Mayor Protemury, you're muted.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Got one last item. Seems like a pretty simple one. I'd move that we continue to do item six D. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'll second.
Let's give Mary Ann a second since it's her item. Any discussion? I, I see Howard has his hand up. I don't know if that was for public comment for this or something else. I, I guess we'll find that out in a minute. Is there? No, I'm sorry. Public comment was closed on this. So is the, I'm, it's getting late. Look at that. Do we have any discussion on going forward with, with item sixty? Can we?
No, no, go ahead.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gresanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Protemury? Mayor Protemury, you're muted.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Staff report on grant writer item.
Yes, honorable mayor, members of city council. This is a brief presentation about the potential for seeking out grant writing services. Next slide. Uh, so there's some pros and cons with grant writers, uh, can identify new funding, grants from state and federal agencies, provide essential funds for cities like Malibu to complete a variety of important projects. And this saves the city from using general fund dollars, although city staff have done a great job of identifying grants. It may be helpful to have an outside firm provide additional effort to track down new funding sources that could match existing projects on the city's priority list that are lacking internal funding. But grants also do come with time limits for completion, which creates deadlines that make these project, uh, these projects and priorities, which sometimes can create issues when there's a long list of non-grant projects also on the priority list. And grant funds also come with requirements for reporting, which can sometimes basically affect an amount of work. So a cost benefit analysis may be required to ensure the funding amount offered is worth the effort to support the funding requirements. Um, with limited staff resources to deliver on the many projects, the city wants to com- complete grant funding searches will, will need to be focused on finding more funds to help pay for the priority projects that are already on the city's priority project list. Um, so it's proposed that an R F P is issued to obtain a grant writing consultant, search for additional funding, match it with city priorities, write the grant application and monitor the processing steps until grant awards are announced. Uh, if council recommends this, uh, path, then we can include it in the cost of service for twenty-three, twenty-four proposed budget. Uh, that would be effective in July of this year. Next slide. Um, so city staff have done a great job of identifying grants. Uh, so far we've, uh, been awarded nearly sixty-three million in grants. Uh, that's a significant amount of money. Uh, while we don't currently have an easy way of running a report of all the grants, we did survey the departments. Um, so it's a bit of a decentralized process right now. Uh, there's about thirty-nine projects and about seventeen different funding sources. Uh, the major sources, C D B G, the measures, FEMA, um, I R W M. And I do want to note that there's eighteen point six million for HUD, multifamily, and, and that's not necessarily de- uh, a definite uh, amount of money, uh, cause that depends on how the project proceeds. Um, uh, so departments are doing a great job, but it's not clear how much more money we would get. Um, but, uh, these are the, the total amounts that we were able to discover in, in grants and outside funding that we currently have. So next slide. Um, we did put together a table. This isn't really, it's hard to see. It's not meant for you to, uh, necessarily go through it, but we just wanted to show the magnitude of what we're receiving now. Um, and we're happy to provide that later if you wanted to take a look at it. Uh, but we are trying to track as best as possible what we are receiving. Next slide. So generally speaking, this is a list of what the process would be like with an outside firm. We would set up the structure with recurring meetings, timelines and project requirements. We'd look for applicable grants and apply. Uh, we gather info from staff on the project, financials, the narratives and so on. Um, the firm would draft the proposal and then staff will review it. Uh, we would submit the application and then monitor, or they would submit the application and then monitor the award announcements. Um, staff are still heavily involved in the workload. Um, and last slide. So with that, uh, the recommended action for this is to direct staff to issue a request for proposals for contract grant writer services and staff is available for questions.
Hey, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have one speaker sign up and one raised hand. They're from Ryan and Howard. We'll hear from Ryan first.
Thank you. I appreciate your bringing this item forward. I'd requested it previously. And one of the components. And one of the components I'd like you to establish, uh, in conjunction with this, um, solicitation for an R F P is, is to identify, uh, desired projects of the city, um. Either by department or, or using a workshop with the city council or, and the public as to what type of projects do we want? And see how that can work into a two and a three-year plan on how to apply for these grants. Sometimes, uh, these plant grants recur and you can kind of apply for the same thing next year. And you should do that because, um, sometimes your competition has already been knocked out because they got the grant last year. And so you'd be, your ranking would go up. Um. We did have a, a dedicated grants writer consultant, uh, previously, uh, and that grant writer just categorically said, I, I don't do traffic safety. I don't, I don't do those grants. I know that's a specialty and I want, want to make sure that the city would, uh, still have the opportunity to solicit, uh, grants writing in the traffic engineering aspect, um, I mean, within the city or using a consultant with a degreed specialty for that, such as Will Dan. Um, the public safety aspect is very important because we have recurring targeted problems of, um, the US mail theft, mailbox, uh, burglaries, if you want to call it that. We don't seem to get any help from the federal government on the federal crime. And that's a big deal. That's what this early morning car from the sheriff department is a, a thing, whether we should have an undercover car for that. Um, or undercover operations for the recurring automobile burglaries that happen to, uh, visitors, uh, in the, the known parking spaces for surfers or for hiking trails, but also to our residents. Especially along Pacific Coast Highway in the eastern end, uh, where cars are being smashed wi- windows, um, and lots of damage to vehicles, sometimes more damage than whatever is, is stolen. And that's a recurring problem. So the last one is arson detection and whether or not we could use a space grant for that to notice, um, high heat generation sources. And I know that there's been some talk about that and arson watch and so forth, but those are our, our big weak points. And I'd like to see those specialty items. If they're not the, um, domain of a general grants writer, if we could carve those out and continue to seek, uh, specialists in that realm. But in general, I do support, uh, the city soliciting the grants writers, but I would like you to actively solicit, not just post an R F P, but try to find some, uh, good grant writers and see if we can add our city to their, uh, workload. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Howard.
Hello. I would really appreciate if you approved this. I think we greatly need it. I think staff has quite a bit of work to do and this would help out getting the projects that the community wants. Thank you.
And mayor, I don't have any other speaker signups or raised hands from the public, so that concludes public comment.
Okay, so Mary Ann, this was an item you had requested be agendized, so go ahead. You first.
I'll make a motion to, um, approve this item and direct staff to start looking, preparing the R F P to start looking for this.
I'll second that. I do have some com- some discussion. Does anybody else want to say anything before, before I do?
Yeah, just.
Cause you.
Is there, is there any better, I mean, I know that we can, you can hire a permanent grant writer, but there are, are there firms out there that have the staff of grant writers and, and, uh, that maybe reach across, you know, greater spectrum in terms of what they know? Is that something we want to take a look at? Or do you want to get a, a one person to help us do this? I mean, I don't know that much about grant writing. Uh, it seems to me that the, this, the current staff are the people that are going to identify the opportunities. I mean, they've been doing that for however long it's been going on here. And it seems to me they're going to be the closest to identifying grant opportunities for their specific issue. So maybe this, you know, having, dealing with a firm that's got a bunch of different people that, that can help us may be a better way to go. That's just one thought. I don't know.
Mary Ann, your hand is up. Is that still from making the motion or did you have a comment?
I had a comment.
Go ahead.
Um, I was gonna agree with Steve that I think, you know, trying to find a firm that has a, um, not necessarily a specialty, you know, I, I will agree. I think our public works and our public safety department has been really good in identifying those things. Um, but as was said, I think it, you know, would be a great opportunity to try and find ways to help with, um, arts and parks and rec projects that we would like to see get um, move forward in this community. And, you know, maybe helping out planning and building safety, see if there's anything out in their realm. So, um, somebody has a lot of great general knowledge would be helpful. I think Ryan's suggestions were, um, spot on and, um. So just having somebody or a company that has a, a a variety of talents would be ideal. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I didn't take grant writer to mean a person necessarily. I, I, I took it to mean a, a person or a firm and a firm probably will end up being the, the most likely candidate. Um, I agree with Ryan that we should actively solicit uh, target applicant, you know, target people that we, people or firms that we think makes sense as a, in addition to complying with other, whatever formal R F P requirement we may have as a government entity. But we should be identifying who it is we want to respond to our R F P and, and encourage them to do so. Um. Just, Joe, you, you put up a slide said benefits and drawbacks. I didn't see any drawbacks. What, what were the drawbacks?
Well, in there are some of the comments that there's deadlines, there's reporting requirements. You know, we could get all the grant funding in the world. It doesn't mean we have the bandwidth to actually use the funds and get the projects done, right? I, I.
No, but, but what's the, what's the drawback of having a grant writer to make the applications?
So staff still are heavily involved in these, in these processes. So even if you have a firm, they may seek out grants, but they still look to staff for the expertise to help with the reporting. So it kind of becomes a team effort. Uh, but you may have deadlines or reporting requirements that are very arduous, that may not make a grant worth pursuing. Or you could get the grant dollars and you realize, you know, it's not worth getting fifty thousand, even though you've approved for the grant because of the amount of time you're spending on it. Um, so there, there's, there can be drawbacks to that.
All right. I, I, I don't see that as a drawback of having somebody available to do the application. I just see that as the kind of decision-making you need to make as to whether to apply for grants or not apply for them. Um, I, just two other comments. One is the, the eighteen point six million HUD money. I, we should have a discussion about that at some point because there's, there's a lot of issues surrounding that. Uh, and then lastly, are there, um, firms that will write grant applications on a contingency? Where they don't charge us an hourly rate for doing it, but they get paid based on success and getting us money?
Yeah, I think there's different models out there. I mean, I don't know every single firm and how they structure it, but I think a lot of them, they might get some of their commission back essentially from the administrative costs that a grant has for it. So, you know, they may get a fee out of that. Um, cause usually most grants have administrative overhead costs embedded in, in them and, and they'll get a fee out of that. Or you can have a retainer, uh, for a grant writer or it's a combination thereof.
So, so I, I'd like to suggest, I don't know if this is part of the, the, a formal friendly amendment type thing, but I'd like to suggest that when the R F P is put together, assuming we approve this, that it encourage, um, the applicants to present, um, creative ways to get paid as opposed to simply hourly rate. For example, a percentage of the grant that they're successful in obtaining for us.
I'll accept that.
Okay, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Riggins?
Yes.
Mayor Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisanti?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Yuri?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Hey, there being no further business, I don't believe we had a motion to adjourn in, in memory of anybody or in honor of anybody. Uh, we're adjourned. See you next week.
Bye-bye, guys.
Thanks for your time, everybody.